Evening, and thank you everyone for your patience. I'm going to call the Monday, July 15th Select Board Meeting to order. We have a pretty packed agenda with some public hearings this evening. So we're going to move right into our acceptance of donations. We'll hear from the Town Manager and then public comment. And we have a few people here tonight for that. So I will turn it over to John to read off our donations.
Yes, I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from the Winchester Tennis Association to the Recreation Department for the Landscape and Services of the William Parker Seating Area at the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm yes, thank you.
I move that we accept with gratitude an EEC Stabilization Grant of $4,083.33 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Childcare License for the month of July.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $20,000 from the Winchester Tennis Association to the Recreation Department for the Landscape and Services of the William Parker Seating Area at the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from the Winchester Tennis Association to the Recreation Department for the Landscape and Services of the William Parker Seating Area at the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW Average Journal Post Number 3719 to the Police Department, and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that covers our donations. Thank you. Now Beth will give us the Town Manager Report. I know we have some appointments as well, so take it away Beth.
Thank you. I'll start with the appointments. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time promotional appointment in the Department of Public Works of Paul Wilde of Loo Burn to Water/Sewer/Foreman, and I request the Board vote to waive the 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Paul Wilde, DPW Water and Sewer Foreman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following permanent regular full-time appointment in the Recreation Department to Child Care Director of Carol McCollum of Westford, who I, having had my children both have her, I very much endorse this appointment.
Strong second on that one. Carol was a saint.
And I request that the Board waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Carol McCollum, the Recreation Department Child Care Director.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration/Civil Service, as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I made the following permanent full-time appointments in the Fire Department of Brian Young and Sohami Tadaji.
Evening and thank you everyone for your patience. I'm going to call the Monday, July 15th Select Board Meeting to order. We have a pretty packed agenda with some public hearings this evening. So we're going to move right into our acceptance of donations. We'll hear from the Town Manager and then public comment. And we have a few people here tonight for that. So I will turn it over to John to read off our donations.
Yes, a move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $200 from the VFW at the John Post Number 3719 to the Police Department and thanks for participation in Memorial Day observance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I vote yes.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from the Winchester Tennis Association to the Recreation Department for Landscape and Services of the William Parker Seating Area at the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm, yes, thank you.
Move that we accept with gratitude an EEC Stabilization Grant of $4,083.33 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Childcare License for the month of July.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $20,000 from the Cummings Foundation to the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community for their Substance/Mental Health Issues Program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $6,011.87 to the Council on Aging for Appreciation of Transportation and Annual Symposium Proceeds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that covers our donations. Thank you. Now Beth will give us the Town Manager Report. I know we have some appointments as well, so take it away Beth.
Thank you. I'll start with the appointments. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time promotional appointment in the Department of Public Works of Paul Wild of Looberne to Water/Sewer/Foreman. And I request the Board vote to waive the 15-day appointment period.
And I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Paul Wild, DPW, Water and Sewer Foreman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following permanent regular full-time appointment in the Recreation Department to Childcare Director of Carol McCollum of Westford, who I, having had my children both have her, I very much endorse this appointment.
Strong second on that one. Carol was a saint.
And I request that the Board waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Carol McCollum, the Recreation Department Childcare Director.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration/Civil Service, as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I made the following permanent full-time appointments in the Fire Department of Brian Young and Sohami Tadaji of Drakeet to firefighter. And I requested the Board vote to waive the 15-day appointment period.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you Beth.
And then just a few updates on items not otherwise on your agenda. We're starting to think about our Fall Town Meeting schedule. So just to put some, plant the seeds with a few dates in folks' minds, the Fall Town Meeting warrant will close on Monday, September 23rd. The week of October 7th will schedule a Select Board Meeting at some point during that week to vote on the Fall Town Meeting warrant for publication. Friday, October 11th, our motions and backgrounds are due to the Town Manager's Office so we can get the motion book put together and out in the timeframe dictated by the Charter. And then our Fall Town Meeting dates are a little wonky this fall because of the election and also because of Indigenous Peoples' Day. So Town Meeting actually starts on Thursday, November 7th. The second night will be Thursday, November 14th. And then assuming we need a few more sessions, it'll be Monday, November 18th and then Thursday, November 21st. Personal updates for the FY '25, as we all know, we were able to create two new positions for, in this new FY '25 budget, for the Assistant Town Planner and the Deputy Fire Chief position. So we are actively interviewing for both those positions. The Assistant Town Planner, I have interviewed this week with the Town Planner. And then also, we have hired the same firm to do an assessment center for the Deputy Fire Chief that we use for the Fire Chief position. And we hope to have that assessment done this Saturday.
Okay.
And then just two items to flag for your meeting on July 29th. We'll have an update. We're having first a joint meeting with the Planning Board at 6:30 on the 29th to talk about the Housing Production Plan Update. We'll have the folks from MAPC in to talk about that. And then also, that same night during the regular session, we'll have Tool in to start talking about all the work that they've been doing over the past few months to look at the traffic calming project in Town Center. We've had quite a few meetings and outreach over the past six or so months. And so they'll be coming in to talk about what they've heard and where we want to go from there. And then finally, just some bid updates. So we've had a very busy bidding season the past few weeks, a lot of big projects that have been years in the making. First up, I'm very happy to say that we were able to, we did have a low bid that came in within our budget for the Morocco Floodmigation Project. So we have our consultants still vetting the contractor, so we haven't signed a contract yet. But we're able to come in with a low bid of about $8.7 million for the construction, which is below our estimate, or in line with our estimate but below what we had requested at Town Meeting. The good news is that we hope that work will start this summer and fall and be completed by next April. So we're on time to finish that in the timeframe that we had hoped.
And how much did we have set aside? I don't know, we asked Town for more money.
Yeah, so we had about 10.2 million set aside. So between contingency and construction admin money, we have, we should have a good amount. We were also able to successfully open bids for the South Reservoir Dam Project. The low bid for that project was around $4 million. We had requested 6 million. We actually approved the borrowings for that tonight. Again, with contingency and construction admin, we'll be, we should be within budget. And that work is expected to start later this summer. And then finally, unfortunately, the Lynch School Traffic Calming Project, that project went out to bid and the low bid was approximately 2.5 million, which is exactly what we have borrowed for that project or will be borrowing for that project. So we are going to go back to the drawing board a little bit and reduce the scope and bid some things as alternates on that project and hope to rebid it in August. I'm happy to take any questions.
So for the hard costs on the Lynch School Traffic, is it like 2.1 million dollars and then 400,000?
Yes, somewhere 2.1, 2.2 is probably in the, between contingency and construction admin.
Okay, thank you.
Do we normally, if we experience that, would we have Tool come back in or would we work with you Beth and Tool to understand what's going into ad-alternates? So is that, you know, is it a raised sidewalk versus it's striping on the road? Like what input would you expect to have into that new design and ad-alternates? What update would we expect as a Board?
Yes, I mean, it's really up to you guys. The staff is working on with Tool, understanding what elements we can pull out to try and get to that target dollar value. If the Board's interested, we can bring that back on the 29th for conversation or I can just give you an update as to what items we're kind of pulling out as ad-alternates.
Because I, and I'm, this goes back maybe to Mike and John and Anthea. I thought we'd had, so we had maybe up to 3 million in borrowing for Lynch was part of that override question. So if we needed to actually do the full project or even bid it as ad-alternate, we could go back to Fall Town Meeting, right? And potentially ask for additional borrowing capacity?
So, right, so we had Spring Town Meeting approved 2.5.
2.5, right.
Yep, which, and then 400,000 dollars of it was for the design, which was already approved at that Town Meeting. Yep.
Okay. So I think I'd like an update maybe on those ad-alternates in terms of what may fall out of scope, what and what that might cost. And if we, I know we want to get the work done. We want to, I have to get the work done before the fall of '25 when the school opens. But if we had to delay or had something contingent on a different vote of Fall Town Meeting, what would that be? And when could we do it?
Yep.
That's just me. I'm not speaking for all of us.
And how are we doing with, on the borrowing side with rates as well? Because I mean, that'll affect the size of that project.
Yeah, you actually did pretty well. The, this is jumping ahead to your first item, but the net interest cost was 3.55%. So, pretty good.
Okay, I mean, so, so we had had the general override for that at 400,000, right? So, and that was debt service for up to 3 million?
400 a year, which was the projection.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Okay, so does that, you know, give us any more wiggle room or anything on the borrowing for the traffic?
Well, so we, Town Meeting approved the borrowing authorization of 2.5.
Yep.
Obviously, the debt service is being paid at the Capital Stabilization Fund. So we'd have to go back to Town Meeting if we wanted to increase that borrowing authorization above the 2.5.
But we have revenue for it, so, okay.
Okay. Other questions on any of Beth's update, not just Lynch? All right. Thank you Beth. So next we're going to move to public comment. I know, I'm aware of at least two folks that are here, but we're going to take our French exchange students first and invite them to the table and come on up and introduce yourselves and let us know what you're up to. I met some of you last week, but please come on up.
Adam Chair, I'm John McConnell. I am the President of the Winchester Jumelage Association, which Jumelage is the French word for "twinning." I know you. The association has been in existence since...
You can have a seat. You all can have a seat.
I'm going to let the ladies have a seat.
Fair enough.
But just given a sort of explanatory paragraph here, we celebrate this year the 34th anniversary of our twinning with a wonderful historic and affluent city just to the west of Paris called Saint-Germain-Allée. It's on, it's down river, it's on the river from Paris. And it contains, among other things, an enormous castle in which the King of France, Louis XIV, was born in the very same year, 1638, that Winchester was founded. So we share a kind of date together, which is wonderful. What we do is promote friendship between French people and American people and mostly between Saint-Germain people and Winchester people. We have a variety of events during the year, including every fall, a joint trip that alternates between France and the United States. This year, we'll be in France. And among other things, we exchange students. We sent three of our wonderful recent alumni from Winchester High School in June for three weeks to work in local businesses in Saint-Germain and live with families. And we reciprocate every year by doing the same thing here. And so we have three delightful women who have been among us for the most beastly weather that we could possibly cook up for them. We had just Friday, a tremendous, successful Bastille Day Party up at Sanborn House. And our godmother, Judy Mujia, who had, she's the, she arranged the whole thing in the first place, sent a wonderful breeze and created a rainbow for us. Anyway, it was a sign that we're doing something right here. So I would like to introduce Celeste Bernou, Eva Jolivé Boisot, and Noémie Du Faye. And if you want, you can take a seat here. And so I'm going to just open it up to you to ask them questions. And this shadowy person standing here is our Vice President, who is Kevin Drum.
All right, have a seat, ladies. So did I, Celeste, Eva, Noémie, did I get it right?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you want to introduce yourselves and maybe let us know what you're up to and your time here in Winchester, we'll just go maybe right to left. And then if you have any questions for us, or we might ask you a question, but welcome.
Hi, so my name is Celeste. I just graduated high school. Here I work at the Kids Dock Creative Theater Center. And yeah, I'm having a great time here.
Yeah, sorry about the heat. That goes for all of you. How that we can do that.
Celeste was actually born in San Diego and lived at the edge of one.
Ah, okay.
So hello everyone, I'm Eve. I graduated two years ago. I'm now entering my second year of studies. I'm studying politics science in Saint-Germain-Allée. But I was born and raised in the west of France. And I'm interning here at Rep. Michael Day's office at the State House in Boston.
Hi, so I'm Amy and I just graduated high school like Celeste. And I'm not living in Saint-Germain-Allée, I'm living like in Asher. It's a city really next to Saint-Germain-Allée. And I'm working at Bookends.
Bookends, nice. So other than the incredible heat, has anything sort of struck you from your time in Winchester? Have you any like favorite ice cream yet? Maybe a favorite book? I don't know. Maybe you don't like to go outdoors because it's too hot, but anything interesting in your time here?
Sometimes it's a bit cold inside.
Nice.
No, I think it's a really peaceful city. It's really, it's real nice.
So you've been to Boston or have you been to the beach or?
Been to Boston. Yeah. We was different and we was a little bit closer.
Great. Nice. Nice.
Yeah, we now understand your addiction to air conditioning. Yeah.
They came from France, which is having unusually cool weather. It's been like early spring weather there. It's been miserable, so.
It's very...
But the south of Europe is like this. It's been in the 90s.
It's raining all the time. We haven't seen that for a while, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, we're thrilled to introduce them to you and have them come to, actually, we met with Michelle and Beth last week and got some understanding of how town government works. The people in Saint-Germain always have a little difficult under time, understanding that their city government doesn't correspond to our town government. And so they're always looking for our mayor and I keep telling them there isn't one.
True.
But just to warn you, we're planning, of course, next week, next year rather, is a big year for Winchester. It's a big year for Boston and America. And we are hopeful of getting a delegation of officials from Saint-Germain to come here and welcome them to Winchester and possibly welcome them to the State House. Michael Day's working on a declaration of welcome and that sort of thing, so.
Nice. Anybody else have other questions for the students? Town government doesn't always run on time, but maybe that's true also in France. My guests perhaps, we try. Any other questions?
We'll be here all night if I start asking questions.
Uh, well, you can, you can ask one. No, it's okay. Go ahead.
I will just ask, since I know the Olympics start in a couple of weeks, will you be home in time for that and do you have plans to see any of the games?
Oh, I'm arriving home when they start, so it's going to be a bit difficult.
I see.
But no, I'm leaving. Definitely leaving.
It's a great question. Yeah, it's going to be busy.
Yeah, I think the plan here is to stay as far away as possible from Paris during the games.
Well, good luck getting to where you're going and getting out of the airport when you land.
Thank you.
Yes. If you have any other questions for us, you know how to reach us. You had a nice tour. We went to the auditorium, in fact, some of the old buildings in Town Hall and what they used to do and what we used to have in those rooms and talked about open meeting. So thanks for your patience tonight and getting here. So I don't know if you want to grab a photo with our students or not to you?
We'd love that. May I sneak over here or something and take?
Or we can, yeah. Where do we usually stand?
Yeah.
This is our director. No, no, Patty will place us. She has a...
So do you want? We'll do it all over here. That's what we've done in the past. It seems that way then we could fit everybody.
Okay.
Patty will stack us.
Yes.
We just, we just do what she asks us to do.
So everybody knows, turn like this, so we can fit all, everyone in. Closer, closer.
Direct it at me, Patty.
Okay, so Bella's not... There we go. Yes. Okay, scoot in.
Okay, is everyone saying "Stop in the Name of Love"?
So I've been doing this with 15 people for an entire week, so I've taken five.
Thank you.
Thank you for the rest of your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good to see you. Thank you. Bill's... Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate it.
All right. So just from a show of hands, how many other people are here for public comment tonight? Okay. Two, three. I will start in the front row if you'd like to come first. And, yes, so state your name, where you live, and usually public comment is three minutes, so.
I'll keep it brief.
Yes, sure.
My name's Caroline Woodward. I live on Woodside Road. I wrote you all a letter a few weeks ago regarding the outfall pipe between Winter Pond and Wedge Pond. We have a group of residents who have homes on Winter Pond who are concerned about the flooding that we've had in recent years. We have a couple of homeowners who have had standing water in their basement for a couple of years now. Our concern is that there is a town-owned piece of infrastructure between Winter Pond and Wedge Pond, which is an underground cement pipe carrying the water from one to another. It is probably, we think it was installed in probably 1935, so it's beyond its lifespan for something made out of cement or concrete or whatever it's made of. Our other concern is that it doesn't seem to be keeping up with the new levels of rainfall that we are experiencing these last few years. So the water levels we are seeing now are higher than I've seen in my lifetime and I grew up on the pond. There's a lot to talk about here, but really, the only reason I'm here tonight is to request that we put this item on the agenda for the August 19th meeting so that we can discuss it at length. I know that you're going to be talking a lot about the Palmer Street Projects and I think there might be some intersection between the two since the culvert runs underneath Palmer Street alongside the tennis courts. So it might be a good idea to get, to start thinking about this in conjunction with that project, that there may be some intersection and some way to solve both problems.
And you're certainly welcome to stay for tonight's update on the tennis courts. It's coming up in our agenda. So, thank you. We'll be in touch on the August agenda as we're building it.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up. And then we'll go to the gentleman behind you. So we'll stick front row then, we'll just move our way back.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chrissy Bordenaro. Been a Winchester resident since 1978 and I'm currently the President of Winchester Tennis Association. I'm here speaking on behalf of the WTA and others that are here in attendance tonight in support of continued funding towards the Packer Ellis Rehabilitation Project. As I'm sure you're aware, last fall, Town Meeting voted and approved a design study to assess the years of deterioration of the courts. Over the past few months, a civil engineer and landscape architect looked at various issues of the courts and came up with some great options that would make the courts safer and accessible to all. It was really exciting to see the possibilities of what these courts could be and continue to be for so many. Last month, on a Saturday afternoon, the WTA held our first USTA Juniors Tournament. It was a huge success. We had 24 boys... Last month, on a Saturday afternoon, the WTA held our first USTA juniors tournament. It was a huge success. We had 24 boys and girls between the ages of eight and 16 years old who came from all over the state to play at the Packer Ellis Courts. Watching them compete and seeing their love of the game was a truly special afternoon. Our hope is to continue to showcase the Packer Ellis Courts to as many as possible in the future. But this cannot happen without investing in the courts to ensure that they're safe and accessible to all. The WTA is grateful for the initial funding provided last fall, and we hope the town will continue to fund for the next phase to preserve this treasured community resource.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And I invite you to stay for the update.
Oh, well, I'll be staying.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Great. You can come on up, too. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Robert Schroff. I actually live in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. But I'm here also as with Chrissy and the WTA for the Packer Ellis Courts. I've been a member there for about four years now as a non-resident. And over the weekend, yesterday, I had an incident at the courts as part of the ongoing safety measures that need updating. Before waiting to play tennis, I was next, I don't know if you guys have been there, but next to some of the fencing above the court retaining wall, watching matches before I got started. And with letting someone through, I fell backwards and the fence at the court collapsed, and I fell back onto the retaining wall, down it a ways. Luckily, I avoided major injury. I did actually fracture a piece of my elbow.
Sorry to hear that.
So I'm, I'm just here as for, for Chrissy and everyone else with the WTA to kind of underscore that there are some very major things going on that can definitely affect safety of other members. I'm very luckily, lucky being a younger, healthier individual of the courts where there are many others that if put in the same situation that I was in, could have ended extremely differently, and we could be having a totally different conversation about injuries that could be sustained due to some of these things that need to be addressed with the courts. I just wanted to share my experience and let you guys know that, you know, even as a non-resident, I love coming here for the tennis community, and I want it to be around for as long as possible. And the only way that's gonna happen is if there's some major changes that, that occur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And appreciate the update. I know you had sent it around, and Nick had shared that with us as well, so thank you for that. And sorry about the fall. We'll see where that fence fits into our design update this evening. Okay. Is anybody else here for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to the next order of business, which is the Comptroller's Report. And if you'd like to come up, Ms. Ward? I don't know. I have some questions.
Wasn't going on your.
Of course I do.
Of course.
You were this close.
I wasn't going to, but I'm here for questions, yes.
So I'll start, thank you. Well, actually, why don't you start, Stacy, with maybe just general overview of, we have a report through the end of May. Obviously, fiscal year just ended, you know.
Yeah, we.
15, 16 days ago. So how do you think the, we closed out the year?
Well, it's still a little early to tell. The May, I know it seems a little bit untimely, but we're, we post cash receipts there usually like a couple of weeks in arrears of going through and reconciling and posting cash receipts and just the timing of your meetings. This is the May report, so it's really not giving you a ton of year-end information. But we just finished, 7/15 is really like the target date for any budgetary issues, any final FY '24 bills. We could still have bills, but they're, not to make this too detailed, but we can encumber the money from FY '24. We still have some time before we actually close FY '24, before we know where everything lands. But it looks like, you know, I ask all the departments how they're gonna close, if they're gonna turn back money. No one wants to turn back any money. No one wants to say they're gonna turn back money, but we're probably gonna have at least $2 million of turnbacks. And that's a combination of different, bigger departments with payroll, payroll, some expenses just left over, not spent. So it's, it's good for the town, but it's hard when you want to estimate where you're gonna land. Some things are just really unknown. But we still have a couple more bills coming in for the energy budget. We have a few health insurance, post-65 surcharges that we're still paying and calculating. So we're really not done quite yet, but I think we're gonna probably have at least $2 million in turnbacks, so that's good news. And on the flip side, the revenue side, we have interest earnings that were unexpected again. We had borrowed some cash. We're making sure that we're not going to be out of compliance with our arbitrage rules. So we, we are spending the money timely, but we just borrowed some big money, so we're earning interest. And it's all, it's good. Good news.
That was actually the local receipts what jumped out, you know, beyond investment earnings even. We had some pretty positive trends in motor vehicle, excise tax, and penalties and interest,
and. Yeah, we're still low on building permits as of May, but we're still gonna look to see where things, I don't think, not everything's posted in June, so it's really hard to say. It is the 15th, but we've really been focusing on getting our bill warrants done. That's really time, time sensitive because we want to make sure everybody has enough money in their budget, and we've been cranking the last week to get all that work done and accrue payrolls, things that related to pay periods back in June that they pay in July. Only one department's really like in arrears for a week. I don't want to get too detailed in that either, but I think right now we're pretty close with getting their FY '25 business settled with the, on the expense side. But there's plenty of receipts that we still have to post.
Stacy, when you talk about borrowing and then when you invested, what are we borrowing for? And then how does it liquidate? What does it go towards?
Yeah, so the reason why we had a lot of cash left, I shouldn't say left over. Last year, at the end of, I think probably maybe March, we borrowed for Lynch, and that was a $26 million or $30 million cash influx. So, but we didn't really spend it right away. We have a certain timeframe. We have to spend a certain percentage of borrowed money. So we're making sure we're following that table. But then we just borrowed another 20 million, I think it was, back in March of this year again, because we know we're gonna be pumping out $5 million worth of bills, like every, every month for those at least. They started a little bit slower, but we should be depleting most of that by the time, I would say, next March, we're gonna need another influx of money. But it's, it's just the timing. And I think with the contract, I don't know when the contractor started the work, but, you know, the demolitions first, and then the engineer finishes their work. So we're really starting to pay those bills. They're pretty hefty, these bills. Hefty. Hefty and very big dollar amounts. So I don't know that we'll see the same interest earnings that we've seen the last, it was a surprise last fiscal year, and it continued to be good for us this fiscal year.
Great. We don't anticipate borrowings of that similar size continuing?
No, no. Not until Morocco comes, when that, when that happens.
And did we really not expend the reserve fund all year?
We didn't. Well, no, we did spend a little bit, and it got replenished. Yeah.
Right. Even so, not a lot.
Yeah, not much. I think with, yeah, so that's gonna be turned back. All of that's $300 and something thousand dollars that's coming back. And then police, fire, DPW, they all have excess salary budgets again this year. So it's, it's good, but.
Yep.
We might, we could tighten things up a little bit, I think, if we're looking for areas.
So with the police and fires, that partly through longevity, retirements, and you're hiring lower cost employees?
Yeah, I would, yeah, there's a lot of turnover in the fire department, I would say, that it's changing people from F, you know, F4, the firefighters being paid certain levels. But I don't know specifically. I think it's just open positions and the timing of civil, civil service lists and people being available. It could come down to a lot of different things.
I won't keep going. I've just.
That's okay.
If I have questions, I'll follow you. But certainly expenses look to be, you know, pretty much in order, so go ahead, Mike.
No, thanks, Michelle. And thank you, Sammy. How did you see me?
I did.
Did this.
And just to John's question, I mean, where are we on the, the borrowing for, for Lynch? Are we, you know, gonna continue and?
I think we're gonna have one final, like cleanup borrowing.
Yeah.
As we get a little bit closer.
With the state money coming in, we'll probably have one more borrowing in March next year.
But probably not 20 million?
No, no. It's, we've borrowed, I believe we've already borrowed 60 million of our total, but I don't wanna, don't, don't write that down and quote me. I'll check. We're, we're authorized. We're authorized for about 96 million, and we've borrowed probably at least half of that already. And so we, we're gonna get some from the state, so we're not gonna borrow the full amount, obviously, but we'll do a ban until the state actually releases our last 5%, which that'll be probably not this, not next fiscal year, but the fiscal year after that, I believe.
When does that hit the tax bills as far as?
The bar, the big borrowings that we already have are, have already hit.
Okay.
The first round hit in the 2024 tax bills, and the second round is gonna hit the 25 bills. So the quarter, the estimated, the, Dan McGurll asks for the estimates, and we include the stuff that, obviously, these are banned, these are just banned interest payments right now, so they're a little less than what the full impact will be for these borrowings. All of them are still banned. We didn't do, oh wait, that's, I take that back. We did one long-term borrowing the first year, but this was just a ban for the second piece.
Okay.
So it's a little less, but the big tax impact kind of hit already with that big first round.
Okay.
Other questions for Stacy? Thanks for coming up. We're gonna let you.
Yeah, I was here to help with any ban questions for the next item, and then if you have the ARPA questions, too, so.
Yep, don't go far. Thank you. Nope. Okay, next up, we actually have a public hearing on a common victory of license, restaurant, wine, and malt beverages for Bangkok, doing business as Charon Thai. So come on up if you could. And welcome, if you could introduce yourselves. We do have your application, but if you'd like to talk about the restaurant, the vision for the restaurant, people are always interested, like, when might it open? What might you serve? I know, we have your hours, hours of operation, but maybe tell us a bit about how long you've been doing this business, or where else you have restaurants, or anything else you'd like to tell us. So welcome.
Hi, I'm TT.
Hi, I'm Boy.
Okay, so I'm speaking on behalf of December in Bangkok. So let me tell you a little bit about Thai food. So Thai food is originally, we divided into four regions. So each region had a unique taste on recipe. So we worked hard on those to, to keep it authentic and offer dishes in our menu. So since we have two other locations, one in Melrose and one in Lexington, we will combine the two into one. And by serving authentic dishes, we ensure that our customer will feel like they're eating in our hometown. So with, with our authentic dishes and our hard work with a reasonable price, and we hope a warm welcome from the town and great opinion for everyone.
Great. And how long have you had the Lexington restaurant? What's your oldest of those other two locations?
The one in Melrose. Since 2017. And we opened the second one in Lexington since 2022.
Yeah, 22.
Not an easy time to open a restaurant, so.
No, it's not, yeah.
Okay. And I know you're looking for, you know, business wine, beer. So are you expecting sit-down service?
Yeah, we actually have about 25.
25, yes.
So counter, and then you sit at the table? Is that the way you would?
Including everything, 25, yeah.
Okay.
This is Joe's Pizza, right?
What's that?
This is Joe's Pizza's spot, right?
Yes, it's Joe's Pizza's spot.
I'm like, 25 people. Didn't, weren't you struck by that? I was like, wow, can you all in there? But I like your kitchen layout, very good.
Yes.
When do you think you'd have this restaurant open?
To be like next month, I would say, like a month or two. Yeah. We has done the first inspect already, so right now we waiting for our constructor and electrician done for the second inspect. Yeah.
So if we didn't approve your license, you'd be sort of stuck, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not very nice.
I'm just, it was fun.
I know.
It's fuckboard, for God's sakes.
And I know I'm gonna defer to, you know, Beth, and I think Patty as well. All the paperwork is in order. We saw, you know, Board of Health, Police and Fire have gone over the plans, and everything looks to be in order. So that's good. We don't have any questions on that. You've been doing this, you're seven years in the business, if I'm doing the math correctly, from Melrose to now, so congratulations on growing.
Thank you.
I'm gonna invite my colleagues to ask additional questions.
I'll just come. I've been to the Melrose location, the food's great.
Oh, nice.
Yes. Character reference.
That's, that's good.
Food critic.
Food, yeah, food reference. Satisfied customer. We'll take it. Anthony, any questions before I go that way?
No, no. Sounds, sounds like it'll be great. Thank you.
Something we don't have in town, so that's good. Bill, any questions?
No, no questions. I just wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And open as fast as you can.
Yeah, thank you.
Same. Looking forward to you guys opening, so best of luck to you. Let us know if there's anything else that we can do to help you out, or the Chamber of Commerce, anyone at all. So I think everybody's anxiously awaiting your opening.
Thank you.
Bring the big scissors, you know, when you get that going, so. Okay. So do you have any questions for us? And we are gonna sort of close that hearing and then take a vote this evening, but do you have any questions for us before we do that?
No.
No? Is anybody here that would like to give public comments on this business license?
Besides John? So her.
I don't see anyone. That would be a butters or anybody else, so, okay. Seeing none, I think I can close the public hearing, and then we can discuss as a group. So you can go back to those seats, and I, but I don't think we're gonna have questions. If we do, we'll call you up, but I think we're good. All right, so.
I move that we approve the common victory, victory license slash restaurant, wines and malt beverage license for December in Bangkok, DBA Karen Thai, located at 612 Main Street in Winchester.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Best luck.
Okay. Now we're gonna move to our business agenda. So first up are the bond anticipation notes. I know we have some details to sign. I don't see Ann.
So Ann is, is sick, so you just have Stacy and I, but I think.
Stacy, why don't you come on back up? I know you like to hide, but we're just not gonna abide that this evening.
Just grab a seat at the table for a while. Just have me, thanks.
I was like, I don't see Ann. I'm looking over some heads, but.
Hopefully you don't have a lot of questions for me.
So we had three projects where borrowings were approved at springtime meeting, and we work with our, our financial consultant from Hilltop to do the ban sales. We had a very successful sale last Tuesday. So the three projects are the Woodside Road Pumping Station, just for engineering, that's 150,000. South Reservoir Dam Project for 6 million, and the Lynch School Traffic for 2.5 million, so 8.65 million total. As I mentioned, we had a net interest cost, NIC, of 3.55 for the low bidder, which I think is good in today's market, so. So I think there's a formal vote for the board in the packet, unless there's any other questions for us.
Is there a formal vote for some specific board?
So the only thing I would say for, for the board is we did some inter-fund borrowing So the only thing I would say for the board is we did some inter-fund borrowing last week. We spun up a very quick meeting to make sure the money could move specifically for the South Reservoir Dam because the Army Corps of Engineers wanted their, they wanted their money and.
Now we'll pay ourselves back.
Yeah, so now we're going to pay ourselves back. So we're sort of like closing the loop on that. We had to let the money flow and we're going to pay ourselves back. But the other two bonds, Woodside and Lynch, we needed to do anyway, so this is always going to be on today's agenda. So I think with that, we can maybe do the motions. John?
So would it be a motion, a motion to approve the general obligation bond anticipation notes as discussed at this evening's select board meeting? Is that good? Yes, maybe? Specific?
Patty has left.
Oh, she's got some specific wording. Usually I get it ahead of time.
Might have to read it verbatim from the votes of the select board handout we got.
I think we don't have to do that.
We do.
Do you think we do?
No, I think, I think Anne has previously just.
This is from the last one. This is all you have to say.
Oh, great.
Oh, okay.
Just a couple more words. Much better.
Motion that the select board adopt all of the votes as presented in the document distributed and available at the meeting. Is that a question or a statement?
It's a statement.
Statement.
Any additional discussion? So in the packet are the votes and the motions to borrow. Any discussion on the board on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to say.
Still don't go, yes, stay right there. Okay, so we did the ban. And now, keeping with Stacy and spending money, we're going to do ARPA Community Needs.
Before we do that, can I ask Stacy a quick question? Stacy, other?
I can't stop you.
No, I don't.
Sorry.
No, this is more like a longer range thing. Are all of our bonds non-callable? So then if rates go down, we can't refinance?
They're callable.
They're callable.
There's a portion, I don't want to say that they're when they are, but there's a certain portion that's non-callable and then they become callable after a certain amount of time.
Okay.
We did a refunding like right when I started in 2022.
Yeah, we've done several, yeah. Once our financial analyst will look at what we're paying in rates, how much savings we'll have, and you have to hit a certain target for savings before you do it. But, yeah, we would definitely look at that.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry. It was a good question.
So with that, anybody else have any questions for Stacy? That was a good question. Thank you, John. So ARPA Community Needs, Anthea has pulled together, we met last week, Stacy's given some feedback. Thank you very much Stacy and Beth as well about inviting nonprofits in the community to submit requests and proposals to expend some ARPA funds on community needs. So there are some limitations of what you can pay for, what you cannot pay for, but there's a draft application in our packet. And I'm going to let Anthea just sort of take it from here, but I wanted to tee it up that you've had meetings and certainly conversation to try to make sure that what we're structuring will actually fly with the rules of the funding, but please take it away.
I apologize, I emailed you my review today.
So we have a few notes to take into account.
But Beth took a lot of them into account already in the draft.
So we had discussed doing a community grant fund with $300,000 of the ARPA funds for organizations within Winchester nonprofit or sort of a term quasi-governmental, I don't know if that's quite the right terminology, but organizations in town that either have already been outreach to through the ARPA process in 2021 or so around some communities as well as some other local organizations who sort of are fairly visible and tend to come up a lot. And so in this application, we discussed a draft of it a few weeks back. We've worked with town council just to make sure that everything is in line, discussed with Stacy and Beth. So just firm it up a little bit, provided specific uses or rather restrictions, maybe, as well as some examples of uses, updated the application schedule such that if we discuss and approve this tonight, that it'd be available July 22nd with a timeline for applications due on August 23rd. And then will be reviewed and awards made on, and awards made by September 16th. One of the considerations sort of led by Stacy, that makes a lot of sense, is that the applications are prioritized if they're for a specific purchase or direct use of funds so that it's something that can sort of clearly be accounted for as well as be able to be sort of expended within the appropriate timeframe for ARPA funds to be used. And then we have within the application on the following pages, just asking for information about the organization's background, the number of residents who'd be, who are served by the organization, who would be impacted, description of the project, timeframe, and then whether there's any portion of matching funds that would be applied. So that's, that's the gist of it. If there's questions on the application, we can discuss that. And then in Beth's Town Manager's Report, there was just a list of the organizations who'd been previously discussed as well as some others that had been sort of added to, added to the list as known organizations in town.
And the process for review again is applications come in and then is it you and Beth? Is it you and I and Beth? I'm not sure who's reviewing.
Yeah, so if we had suggested, I guess it would be up to two members of the board, we'd take a look at them before as they come in and just sort of be able to give an assessment of making sure that, you know, so that the full board is not getting a long list in case some things would need to be removed or anything like that.
So we're going to give people until about 30 days, so we can come back around. We do meet as a board a few times before that deadline. So if any other board member wants to volunteer and raise their hand and review proposals with Anthea, we can take that up tonight. We can take it up a different time, but Bill raises his hand.
Happy to help.
We don't know if we'll be swamped, but the application is rather short, so there shouldn't be too, too much to read. It shouldn't be like that.
Yeah, and if there's any additional comments on the application draft, now would be the time for us to make those edits so we can finalize. And I believe the idea is then that the Town Manager's Office will send out to those organizations.
That's what I was going to say. Just make sure we're all on the same page that I, we had this list of people who had previously responded plus a few that we had discussed with Michelle, Anthea and Stacy. If that list looks good to you, we can work to finalize the application and I can email it directly out to those people.
I only wanted to change up like the last italic section just to go along with supporting documentation. I don't know if you want to get into those weeds, but just adding like project award quotes and things. I wrote a little blurb in the email. I don't know if you have it up.
Yeah, so that's the change to the very last piece is upon award, the town will work with the applicant to determine the required supporting documentation of their request, e.g. purchase quotes and additional supporting documentation when the funds are used by the applicant, e.g. purchase receipts and/or proof of payment.
So you need that to make sure it's being appropriate, appropriately expended. So that's reasonable, so thank you for that.
And I found out from the audit firm that, who audits a lot of these grants, that we don't have to do the normal, really tedious sub-recipient monitoring and making sure they follow all these rules. And so we just need to do something that's best practice for us, which I think is just making sure we work with the, the organization to have their right documents in place. And we can certainly help. I'll be part of that team to help them get their stuff together and answer any questions they have.
The other thing we discussed was that if we don't see evidence and a plan to expend by November 15, we're going to potentially cancel that award. We want to make sure we're expending all the ARPA funds. We're not going to hold on to it and hope that someone can gets it together by the end of the calendar year. So that's another clause to move quickly, have a project that's ready to go and have proof to do the spending.
So Stacy, will you be looking at the application when it first comes in just to make sure that it's even compliant and then before it goes to bill on Anthea?
Yeah, I'll work with Beth on that and we'll kind of vet them.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Obviously, we're invited to give any feedback on the actual application. Please, you know, funnel that through Beth. If there's any, Stacy already did, but if anything else people have questions on in the words, please funnel that back to Beth, certainly copy Anthea. But we'd like to get it pushed out the door and give people, you know, four weeks to respond. And we are going to sort of specifically push back to people who've raised their hand and expressed interest in the past. So we're trying not to miss anyone and we're trying not to, it's, you know, it's the summer, it's a slow time of year, but by talking about it publicly and hopefully doing some proactive outreach, we can hit people who may be interested. So.
Is there anybody from this list that anybody thinks is missing?
I wonder if the farmer's market might?
We do.
Do we want, do you have the list? It's separate. We've got like a lot of attachments.
Yes. It's a separate attachment, so do, we know what we're looking at? Or do you want to read them off, Beth, or?
Sure.
Or I can?
I can.
Go ahead.
So the folks who responded previously was INCA, the Housing Authority, Chamber of Commerce, WINCAM, Housing Partnership Board, Disability Access Commission, Winchester Got Lunch, who I believe is no longer active, so unless I hear otherwise, I will remove them. Coalition for a Safer Community, Winchester Cultural District, the Community Music School, Wright Lock Farm Conservancy, Council on Aging. And the ones that we had discussed adding was the Family Area Network, FAN, Winchester Cultural Council, the Conservation Commission, ABC House, Network for Social Justice, and then I just wrote down the farmer's market.
So Anthea, I imagine, or and Beth, I'll say both, you'd like a motion, I think, to proceed sort of in the current form and intent so we can move forward and finalize the application? Something along those lines?
Yeah, I think to approve the application substantially of the form presented.
Okay.
Seconded, so was that a motion? So moved if there wasn't?
Yes, there's a second. Any discussion on that motion?
No, thank you for putting that together, Anthea. So it looks, it's great.
All right, let's, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks Stacy.
You're welcome. Have a good rest of the night.
I'll try to think of something to get you back down here.
The very end.
Yes. Hey, thanks for making your own motion. Hey, there's nothing that says you can't, right? It is your body of work, so why not? All right, so next up, Packer Ellis Tennis Courts and Schematic Design. Not sure who exactly is here, but. Patty, do you want me to turn the screen?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, great. Thank you very much.
So as everybody knows, we were very happy to receive some funding last fall, I think it was, from Town Meeting to do kind of a schematic concept level design to look at how we can improve the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts facility, which is definitely showing its age, I would say. And so we hired VHB and Chris Huntress, who has worked for the town quite a bit on a variety of projects. And so tonight is really the culmination of the kind of public outreach and conversations they've had over the past several months working with our Recreation Department, Engineering and the Tennis Association. The next phase will be another phase of design, which would take us through construction documents, but I wanted to bring it to this board so you could kind of review where things stand, have an idea of what the kind of concept is to move forward and make sure we're all comfortable with where we're headed before we, you know, request the next phase of design money and further that design. So with that, I'll hand it over to you guys.
Sure. Thank you, Beth. That was a great intro. Jeff Ketter, it's civil engineer with VHB and as Beth mentioned, Chris Huntress here with Huntress Sports. And yeah, as Beth mentioned, we're here just to give a progress update on what we've been studying and working through with the WTA and other folks in the town, evaluating the existing conditions and opportunities for how we could, we could renovate the courts and adjacent site areas. So we'd just like to give you a quick presentation to show what we've been looking at and happy to answer any questions, comments or follow-up afterwards as discussed. So happy to hop in. I'm sure everyone's well familiar with the site, but just want to give a quick overview and, you know, as part of our due diligence efforts, when we, when we look at opportunities for a site, we want to understand the constraints as well and the site conditions. Certainly unique site, Palmer Street to the north here, the Packer Ellis Courts in the middle and Wedge Pond off to the north, the bottom right of the site with the existing beach house there as well. Budding Properties sitting higher than the, than the courts in the middle. And I'm sure you're, you're well familiar with the location, but you know, a couple constraints that really jump out that are going to be critical issues to sort through in design. We have flood plain, the majority of the site's located in the 100-year flood plain that we'll have to address cumulative flood storage. We have wetland resources associated with Wedge Pond, which will need to be coordinated with Conservation Commission. And I know it was mentioned already, but I think primarily the issue we're looking at is access, access safety and circulation and how do we make these courts as usable as possible. It's really a beautiful, beautiful site and a lot of opportunity there. So just wanted to run through a quick snapshot of the existing conditions, but I'm sure is well familiar here. Just some photos here of what we're talking about and courts in the middle, certainly the existing retaining wall, seating area directly adjacent to Palmer Street is really kind of the critical area for us to look for opportunities to improve access and viewership for the courts.
So when you survey people, what do they want? I mean, you want safety, structural integrity and so forth, but what else do, what else are you charged with looking at for this from a, you know, usability standpoint or from a spectator's standpoint? You know, what, what are you thinking?
So a variety of things, seating being one.
More seating, better seating, different place of seating, better viewing, you know, what's, what's in that? I know you might get to it, but just like.
Sure.
It'd be helpful to give, helpful for me to understand what the charge was.
Sure.
And then how we ended up where we're going to end up. I mean, it's great, it looks great, but I just want to get inside the machine.
Sure. And we are jumping a little bit ahead. That's coming up.
Yep, okay.
But basically our charge is renovation of the existing courts. Right now you've got 15 courts and we're going to go to 13 courts. And the reason that we lose is because we're trying to maintain the existing footprint that you have based on some of the environmental constraints, but improve ADA accessibility, improve spectator viewing opportunities, improve coaching opportunities, improve arrival and parking and also some administration, meaning check-in locations, bathroom facilities, all those things. Where do all those go? How do people circulate throughout the site? How do we move buses through? How do we move cars through? How do we move people through and where are accessible routes for ADA and access? So those are some of the things that we looked at and the kind of range of alternatives that we presented to the, to the committee over the course of the last couple of months.
Thank you.
Hope that helps.
Yep, it's great. Thank you.
You know, we, we have several photos, but again, I think this gives a good look at, at what Chris mentioned and really how we're, we're trying to look at how to improve access. And with that, you know, kind of just as importantly is code compliance and bringing thing up, up to current standards.
Yeah, just to end on that slide, Jeff, unless you forget another one that looks down that edge. That transition up to Palmer Street represents one of the more challenging constraints or I guess you could look at as an opportunity as well to the site in that the viewing occurs up above, the playing occurs down below. But how do we transition people between those elevations and comply with ADA codes and safety codes?
So last year we had, we had a group in here that was for volleyball on the beach and just want to make sure that, that people can still go down to the beach and play volleyball and have parking and so forth. At least that's into your thinking, because that's.
We're actually working with the volleyball group as well.
Great, thank you very much for that.
We've been talking to them as well. So those are, you know, it's just a great image to look at and say that kind of wraps up some of the primary challenges from, from viewing and access right there with that image.
So I'll do a quick lead in here and then maybe push to Chris, but, but this is just, this is an overall site concept of, of where we landed. And just to kind of speak, maybe I'll, I'll go kind of right to left, but what we're showing here is, is an improvement of the existing gravel area to formalize some parking, provide as an area that would be used for drop-offs as well that a school bus could get down into the site, drop students off and circulate safely instead of unloading folks on Palmer Street. So this would give us some opportunity just with some improvements to the access drive-in and the lower parking area for that circulation to occur, to occur. And provide where that large red asterisk there is, is a central location that folks could be dropped off from there and, and access the site and the courts on foot. So a primary accessible location there to get to the courts as well as formalizing some of the parking for a safe, a safe surface. The existing drive heading through the adjacent property, you can kind of see a small triangle or piece that, that does go through the existing housing development that would, that would remain in place as shown here. But we would look at some minor improvements to the existing entrance drive-in to make that code compliant. And obviously, once we move forward, we need to continue coordination with the fire department and make sure that emergency access was maintained in conformance with, with the fire code. Chris, maybe I'll flip to you on, on kind of moving towards the courts here?
Sure. So as I said when we started, you have 15 courts there now. This plan shows 13 courts. Sure. So as I said when we started, you have 15 courts there now. This plan shows 13 courts. So we've lost one full-size court and one singles court. You had 14 doubles, one single. We now have 13 doubles. The way we lost that was primarily the bank in the middle. If you look at that, there are four banks of courts, if you will. The two in the middle that now have three courts each, there you go, Jeff, had four courts originally. Your dimensions were varied throughout years. What we've done is we've standardized everything to a USDA tennis dimension, meaning width, length, setback runoff areas for all the courts. And by doing that, we're able to, and losing those two courts in the middle, we were able to gain a pedestrian access and kind of coaching alley, if you will, right through the middle of the courts there that starts at that red asterix that Jeff had mentioned, which is kind of the primary ADA access, and comes into the courts, and then takes a 90 right down between those last two banks. And with a series of stairs and ramps, we can actually transition back up to Palmer Street in that location and create active viewing. We have to be careful about how we build that viewing because of the 100-year flood elevation, and we have to, you know, can't deliver it over. We can't just fill down within that area. But it's, I'm making it sound more complicated than it is. It's not terribly complicated. But that's how we're able to really improve accessibility, expanded seating, viewing into the courts, but also expanded viewing and coaching opportunities down in the courts themselves. And introducing a few shade structures along the way and the like. So that's the balance of the improvements to the tennis courts. The other things that we've talked about were improvements at the main entry, which included a range of alternatives, all the way from entry kiosk for information services and that kind of thing, all the way up to and including administrative building space, bathroom space, and the like. And that that would be shared with the parking associated for the beach and could service the beach as well.
So, I mean, it doesn't surprise me that we had non-conforming tennis slots, because we're like the town of non-conformities. Seems like that's on brand, but could you help me understand where the ramp is in that blue section by that red, like, the ADA accessible ramp to get from Palmer Street down? How would someone who's using a walker or something else, how would they actually get down to the courts?
Sure, sure. So starting here, it's basically a two-tiered step, so the ramp would come down here to the left to this viewing area that would be about halfway down to the courts.
Yeah, the walkways and ramps are all in blue, and that viewing area is in yellow.
There'd be a second series of ramps heading down here to get to the bottom of the steps. So kind of a switch back along the planned north and south sides of this central area.
And then how many entrance points from Palmer Street to, you know, the ramp? Is it one entrance off Palmer that funnels everybody through there? If you're not going down the bus route, coming off the street, it's one entrance?
One pedestrian entrance, correct.
One pedestrian entrance. You could go straight down a set of stairs, and then the ramp provides alternative access.
Coming through one, sort of one gate?
One gate up above. That gate could be closed if the town chose to choose to control entry to the primary entrance down below and bring everybody in for an event or something else. You could do that and bring everybody in down below.
What's in the blue on the upper section?
That area would be an elevated deck, much in the way that you would have, say, an elevated grandstand or bleacher, which would have posts that would come down to grade. So it would be two rows of seating, incorporating handicap seating into it as well, with a viewing deck kind of behind the seats. There'll be a cross aisle in front, that's code compliant, two rows of seating, and then a viewing platform, if you will, right behind the seats. We did some cross-sections, but I'm not sure we included them in this presentation.
Here's a discussion about the condition of the retaining wall. What did, does that need work, need be replaced? What's, what does, what do you envision happening there?
We need to evaluate it further, but at this point in time, I think it's prudent to assume that it does need some replacing, particularly where we're looking at an opportunity to provide seating above it as part of that structure. So one of the next steps is we need to, you know, I think, once we have kind of general consensus, we want to make sure we're incorporating comments, concerns, questions, but we will, we will be looking at a preliminary cost estimate and a budget, and that's certainly an item I think at this point we need to assume would need repair.
That's a good comment, because the section of that wall has clearly failed.
Right.
I mean, it hasn't fallen over, but it's got a healthy lean to it. So this is master plan level, so we are recommending, as you go into the next phase, the geotechnical and structural engineer take a look at that wall and assess how much of it has to be removed.
And to the extent that we heard tonight about Winter Pond and culverts and things coming through the cemetery and crossing under the tennis court, does this design sort of disrupt any of that flow? What is it doing with anything that's like water coming down and flowing out of the tennis courts? Will that be disturbed? Will that be shifted in any way?
I would say maintained, if not improved, and that's the standard we're going to have, we're going to have to meet. It's great to hear feedback on any other conditions. That will certainly keep that in mind, but we'll put a full stormwater analysis together and design and document that we are improving stormwater runoff at all points. Our intent would be to maintain the drainage pattern. We know there is drainage concerns, particularly just a lot of ponding on the back courts. So priority is making sure that we can, you know, drain that water out appropriately, but, you know, treat it and manage it according to, you know, the environmental requirements. Balancing that with the floodplain as well, there's certainly some challenges, and, but we know we need to address that as part of it, and making sure that we're improving the condition now is a must.
Could you, could you talk a little bit more about that? So, like, have 100-year floods, which seems like maybe they're a little bit less than 100-year floods at this point. So, you know, what's, what's under consideration for that, and how is the, sort of the idea of the floodplain and water?
I would say our primary goal is finding a solution where we're not increasing impervious area as part of, as Chris mentioned, we are going down to 13 courts from 15. So if any opportunities we can take of removing impervious coverage, certainly the clay there, as far as drainage standpoint, I'd consider that impervious. It's functioning that way. That's a primary goal, but otherwise, what we would look to do is try to capitalize on any surface-level stormwater approaches, if possible. As Chris mentioned, we'll need to do a geotechnical investigation and get an understanding of the soil and groundwater conditions to make sure that we do something that's going to function. But, you know, an example we were looking at is, you know, is parking lot here, would we be able to utilize the central landscape area for a shallow basin to treat and store stormwater? Alternatively, do we need to look at some subsurface storage to address either water quality or just mitigating the volume of runoff? So all options are kind of on the table. We're thinking a combination of treating the parking lot in one way, ideally through surface runoff, and that's going to be where more of the pollutants are anyways, which would be better from a water quality standpoint, but we also need to treat everything else from the courts.
Jeff, is it safe to say that everything that stormwater runs off the courts right now, and it's not collected, just it's sheet flow?
Correct. There is some drainage there, but our understanding is it's not functioning and tied in.
So the recommendation would be now that we collect that through trenches, a series of trench drains and underground pipes, we put it into an underground leaching system, and we encourage infiltration, which will help some of that long-term runoff.
Yeah, that was my question really, on some, if there'd be need for some underground storage there. What we've seen recently is really flash flooding along Palmer Street, which really kind of overwhelms the retaining wall in that area there. So even if it's in pretty good condition, you know, years of flash flooding coming off of Palmer Street, which seems that it's more, more than norm at this point, I think is going to require us to do some underground storage there, which hopefully will help. I do like in the parking lot that you've accounted for some of that there, but I think the amount of water that is coming so quickly, kind of just over the wall and kind of down there, the courts themselves, surprisingly, I mean, they do a really good job of absorbing it and some of that flowing off, but it seems like those, some of that stormwater is, just really overwhelms the existing structure and has really accelerated the deterioration of that area. So that would be my only suggestion as we're investing in it.
Yeah, I mean, utilities, why not? You have it, so go for it.
The most exciting slide of all.
Exactly.
So, you know, we will obviously further develop that plan, but wanted to speak to that, maybe just from utilities, also a zoning standpoint. So utility-wise, we touched on stormwater, but that'll need to be further developed once we get an understanding of the subsurface conditions. Sanitary sewer, we understand. There's an existing septic system. For the, for the older building, one thing we wanted to understand is-
It's a tank that's pumped, not, not septic system.
Okay, okay, okay. I was going to say, because we're, we weren't going to go that road anyways, so fortunately, there's some infrastructure in Palmer Street that we would, we would look particularly at the, you know, bathroom facilities, just to make sure we can accommodate that. Probably looking at a forced main to pump that back up to Palmer Street into the municipal system. Water service, we know there's, there's a combination of feeds for some of the sprinklers there, but I would assume we'd pull service off of Palmer Street as well in the existing main, as well as, as well as power and communications if needed for the, for the new facility. The other thing I think helpful to highlight here is maybe just going back to some of those constraints. You can see the 100-foot buffer is this line here, so even though the concept shown now is outside of it, I think as we develop it further and impacts, we'll probably be getting into, obviously respecting the beach property, but just want to highlight the extent of the 100 buffer, sorry, the 100-foot buffer. From a zoning standpoint, we also, the setback line for the side rear and front yards is roughly this line here, so just want to highlight that. The understanding is the, there's an existing non-conformance with the setbacks that we wouldn't be able to alleviate without significantly reducing the program, but just want to flag that's probably an effort we're anticipating with the zoning board to go through. We would certainly look to improve the setbacks from the current condition, but do want to highlight that there is an existing non-conformance there.
So permitting-wise, in summary, it's Conservation Commission, zoning board, because we would expect to be in front of both of those bodies over the course of work.
Yep.
You mentioned, from John's question about the volleyball courts, could you just sort of indicate where those are approximately in this image?
I can.
Somewhere over to the right, but that's my best guess.
About, if you can, yeah, right, down, 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 right. One is right about where his hand is now, and the other would be closer to the leaching basin. Jeff had you left right there. So there are two full-size volleyball courts, and we did a quick sketch for Meg White in engineering to just show how they would lay out. They don't impact grade. They don't clear, there might be one tree that has to come out, and some benches or play equipment that needs to be relocated, but otherwise, they fit in there pretty well. It's a pretty non-intrusive, you know, there's sand there now, but quite frankly, it's not clean enough sand for volleyball, so they would excavate, come in with new cleaner sand. They could construct an edge around the court if they wanted to, and new nets, so fairly inobtrusive construction. The whole excavation would be limited to about 12 inches in depth total.
Thank you.
So what are you working on closely, I'm sorry?
The two projects could go ahead independent, right? There's nothing on the volleyball project or the tennis court that relies on one or the other.
One does not rely upon the other, and, you know, I know Meg went to have a conversation with the conservation administrator about the impacts of volleyball courts within the buffer. They're clearly within the 100-foot buffer, but again, there's no change in grade, very limited excavation. It's sand to sand when we're done, so pretty straightforward.
Yep. Do you need like a DEP permit if you're going to work with that 100-foot buffer?
No, not, well, you need a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, which generates a DEP number, but DEPs review would be rather limited in this capacity.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have one final one, well, maybe it's not the final one. On the viewing deck, that's going to give you, the spectators, an ability to look over the passageway, walkway, to see the players on those first two courts on the other side. Now, if you sit too close at a Bruins game, you can't see the certain portion of the ice, and I want to make sure that, I mean, I'm sure you guys follow this, this is your profession, but I just want to get some assurance from you that-
We did a line of study, a quick line of study, so you'd be able to see the two courts in front of you from that seated position, and the standing area deck would be elevated slightly higher than the seats right behind you.
So then you can see the courts on the other side of that walkway.
You would see, you would see, actually, you would see all six of those courts.
Okay, you could see, that's what my question was, okay, thank you.
The viewing rail will be fairly open and visible through as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's next?
So this is as far as the money we have right now takes us. So our recreation director, Nick, who's in the back of the room, is putting in a capital request for the next phase of design. We're still kind of working to finalize what that design number is. Kind of wanted to hear what you all had to say and make sure we were kind of on track in terms of where the scope was headed. And so the next phase is a design request, and then subsequent year would be a construction funding request.
I just want to hear from Nick on if the reduction, the reduction in the number of courts, how does that affect our ability to serve our residents first and foremost?
I had the same question, John.
Hello, everyone.
Eric.
Thanks for having me. So we actually talked about this in depth in some of our early initial meetings with the WTA, with some of the members. We do feel that we, we have the ability to adjust our operating hours to make up any of that lost, lost space. Also being creative with the type of programs that we run. Right now, we've run a lot of programs that overlap, which takes up a lot of our court space, which lessens the amount of members that can get on the court. So we can get creative with how we schedule those, those programs, those lessons. There's a way to reduce maybe some of the outside rentals that we're using to get some increased revenue and push them into some of the less-used time. So we feel that the reduction of courts is not, you know, is not the end of the world. We feel like it'll still be, have a really solid impact on getting people in there and serving our residents. There are many times where the courts are super busy, so we're talking Friday nights, Saturday mornings, especially, and Sunday mornings, but there's a lot of times where there's a lot of space that we can kind of adjust and move around, so they're not always 100% packed, but there are times when they are.
We looked at lighting at all, you know, in that area at least, well, for two ways, for safety and access, if that needs to be improved. I'm sure it does, especially if we're increasing accessibility along that way, but also for certain courts for later hours or anything like that.
We have not looked at sports lighting-
Okay.
Nighttime lighting yet for sports play. Obviously, for arrival and security issues, yes, we would have-
Okay, okay, good.
Include in that, but no, part of our scope is not included.
And there's no lighting out there now currently, right, for nighttime?
Even if you're looking at those three courts nearest to the parking lot and the pond there, you know, it might, might help if you were able to provide some sports lighting there to offset the loss of the courts and to have people play later. And it's kind of in the middle, you know, of the project there, so not necessarily close to homes that are around there that would create a lot of additional noise and, you know, and volume as well, so I don't know.
It'll be difficult for us to include a light layout and photometric study to show you what that would include, so we go on those three courts or as much as really you guys tell us you want, we can get that done.
So Nick, I mean, you run recreation as an enterprise fund, but this, if you were to carve out tennis and the courts as an enterprise, does it pay for itself between membership and camps and tournaments? And if so, like, roughly, does it generate profit?
Yeah, so we typically run lean down there, so it's pretty much a net-neutral program. Any given year, it kind of changes based on the, the amount of members we get taking lessons. Lessons are really kind of covering a lot of our expenses down there. The memberships, we've been keeping it somewhat low. The last couple of years, we've had positive revenue, but it's a small percentage of our overall profit-loss margin, for lack of better words. So it really does run more of a neutral. So it really does run more of a neutral, maybe a little loss in some years, maybe a very small profit in the best years.
I'm just curious, if the reduction of courts from 15 to 13, does that impact our ability to host tournaments? Like, are there 14-court tournaments that we are now opted out of? I have no idea how that operates.
Yeah, not necessarily. I think it might, on our biggest tournaments, it might make them a little bit longer, stretch them out a little bit longer in days, but I don't think it's gonna affect the amount of courts that we need for tournaments. Typically, a lot of the tournaments that we do run outside of the big town tournament use four to eight courts, so we should have plenty. And usually, when we do have the big tournaments, there's a court or two that's still available for drop-in play.
Right, okay.
Nick, do we need any kind of onsite storage there as well for ball machines, balls, or whatever else for, you know, lessons or anything like that?
Yeah, we currently have three different little sheds that we currently utilize. There's no plan to get rid of those, those will still be accessible and part of the maintenance area. We talk about having some additional storage in the admin building. We have, you know, a multitude of different options that we can use there, and based on what we're, we kind of end up with the final design might give us the idea of what we might need for additional storage, but that has been part of the discussion.
Yeah, because with the final design, the project might end up being something that we take in stages, and, you know, and that might be in a stage that, you know, maybe is serviced by fundraising or something like that as well, so that's what I suggested.
One of the last pieces that we'll be working on, close out this week and early next week, is kind of a range and magnitude cost estimate, so that we can start to talk about where the project may sit in the longer term, so we expect to add that to you.
That'll be helpful, because I'm thinking, you know, where John started with, what was your charge, right, and your public comment earlier tonight, so, you know, access safety, like, what's the first things we might need to, you know, address? We have a failing leaning, you know, Boeing retaining wall, we have potentially some really difficult ways to access courts, like, so whether we solve for circulation out of the gate, you know, we definitely have some drainage problems, but the courts themselves seem to drain okay, so if you're looking at safety from getting to the courts, safety from railings and other things, you know, walls and safe seating, what, if you had to do it in phases, which we're not saying you do, what does that look like, right? Like, this addressing safety and sort of access first, so it's more ADA compliant, then addressing circulation and having coaching seating and other things, like, just understanding sort of what can you do within those first couple of metrics? Because I know when you're capital planning, safety is a huge priority for us as a town. Circulation, you know, is important for the program, maybe not as important from general safety in the town, so if you could, as you're going down that path, that'll be helpful to just see, these are the things that address those needs, these are the things that get this much more robust program with a lot better, you know, seating and coaching and all those other opportunities, which are not necessarily safety concerns, but certainly useful to have in a tennis court of that size or a complex of that size. Other questions?
My only other question was kind of on landscaping as well around, I know there's particularly kind of on the, I guess that's the west side there, maybe the south side, there's just a lot of those pine trees that are well-overgrown and not really providing much of a buffer from elements, but also from Lantern Lane and the homes there. So I know that adds to the cost to it, but it may be time to kind of tackle something there as well.
You're talking along this edge here.
That's right.
Yeah, got it, got it.
We talked about that with the committee.
Anything else? This is great, thank you.
Thanks for having us, Eric.
Yeah, it's great, thank you.
Keep us updated, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thanks.
All right, the next one should be easy, and then there were three, two, counting. Oh, you're staying, all right. EverSource mitigation funds, we have it in the packet, I think we have a motion on this one, but Beth, if you want to, you know, we're planning to use these funds as intended, but Beth, if you want to give some additional context?
So the board signed a MOU with EverSource back in 2021 that included some contributions, mitigation fund contributions to be used towards traffic and pedestrian improvements on Cross and Washington Street, along the project corridor. We've heard a few weeks ago from folks about what those plans might look like. We did just get the last chunk of reimbursement money, it was done on a kind of a milestone schedule, and we had to submit reimbursement to EverSource, or not really reimbursement, but we had to submit information to them to get that money. In the past, this money's had to go to town meeting to be appropriated, but the new legislated action that creates this new Chapter 77, Acts of 2023, we can just have the board vote it, so with Stacy's blessing, I have a motion that-
All right.
-to John, unless there's any questions.
So I do have a question, just not specifically on this, but thinking about the work that could be coming down Pond Street in a few years, is, what is our ability to negotiate, like, an impact fee or reimbursement for the town's time in that, especially where it benefits seven other communities or eight other communities, and it's an undue burden on the town and the taxpayers?
I say, we tried hard.
Right, no, I know.
I was met with quite a bit of resistance, I mean, you were on the board as well. You know, we started out with a very long list of asks, and it was very quickly narrowed down to a very short list. We did, you know, as part of it, we obviously got a little bit of mitigation dollars, we did, we were able to hire a field engineer that they reimbursed us for to be out there to kind of be our eyes and ears, because, you know, their project was one of many, many construction projects happening in the town. But I think if, I would say, in my opinion, the mitigation that we got from these two projects, 115, fell vastly short of the impact and man-hours the town spent.
Right, so I think that, my point is, based on experience, now we've got experience in two different projects and getting essentially soaked, that we've got some better evidence to be made whole, that's all I'm saying, and not being greedy, just saying, look, we should be at whole, so.
Their policy is that they provide mitigation funds really directly connected to the impact of the project from their perspective, right, which is, you know-
It's an ox.
Right, sidewalks and, you know, returning, doing small improvements that are right where they have dug and everything like that, and part of their reasoning on that is that they're there in every, you know, community in the Commonwealth, and, you know, if they start giving one community one thing, then they've got to do it other places, so they're very unwilling to really entertain. We threw a lot of what I thought were within the scope of their policy, and they still said no, and, you know, unfortunately, we can always try, but I think our, you know, we have to manage expectations for these future projects, so.
I'll just add that it's frustrating that even in what's happening now, which is the sort of repair of things on Cross Street, there are still some issues, and not-
It's still disruptive, right?
It's disruptive, and also, I understand it's still not, like, it's not ideal, it's not, things are being repaired, but also at the same time, they're still not left in safe conditions while they're being repaired, and that's still stuff that's being dealt with in, you know, immediate vicinity of the work.
All right, with that- National Goods at the top of your street, just they were today, they appeared on Main Street today. At EverSource, right across from Mystic School.
Have we tracked the number of hours that we've-
Thousands.
It's at 1 billion right now.
If we're gonna make an argument about getting more money out of EverSource, I want to make the best argument possible. If you have empirical evidence that shows how much time the town has put into helping them with their projects, that blows their expectations out of the water, I'd like us to document that as best we can, which is why I'm asking.
At this point, it's 10 years' worth of work, all four people in the engineering department, probably multiple people from DPW, town managers, I mean, it's just, at this point, it's incalculable, right, the amount of time that people have spent on it. I mean, as town engineer, I probably spend 10 to 20 hours a week on it, depending on the week.
And part of that was protecting our, you know, existing infrastructure under the road, which was, you know, if we hadn't spent the time on there, it would have been, I mean, there already were some issues there, but I mean, it could have been a lot worse if we didn't afford that time, because they certainly were not interested in doing that work, so.
All right.
Given that-
I move that the select board accept the $150,000, accept the $150,000 from EverSource to be deposited into the Chapter 44, Subsection 53-K Fund, and that this money be spent on traffic and pedestrian improvements related to the 345 KV transmission line construction in accordance with Section 7 of the MOU signed by the board and EverSource in March 2021. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Next up, Mystic School Heat, so I'm going to try to restate where I think we are coming into these questions, and Beth can correct me if I'm wrong. So we met and discussed this a few weeks ago, we had a Wednesday Zoom call on Mystic Heat, we had Pete there, Nick was on. Later that day, school committee sent some questions, probably around June 28th, those got circulated within Town Hall. So the school committee had sort of moved favorable action pending some additional clarification for Weston Sampson, pending some additional questions on how does this solution actually address the needs of the classrooms that are cold? So a series of questions came in, we have them in our packet. We would probably still need to go back to the school committee if we're to move forward to get the official approval, we had sort of like, we're okay with it, but we have questions, so now we've provided answers to questions. We, as a board, need to decide, do we want to go back to the school committee with this design to get that final blessing, because it is the Mystic School, it is their school that they control, and what other questions do we have? But I think that's where we left it, Beth, right? We had not moved forward into the next phase of design, we were gonna wait to see what the school committee had for questions, and if there's more context, please-
Yeah, so I think the board, the direction that we got from the board at the last meeting was that you wanted to move forward with the design as proposed, but we wanted to have Weston Sampson do some additional work around evaluating those areas that were out of scope, that were still kind of on the colder side. So we did speak with Weston and Sampson over the past few weeks, they are able to bring that into their project design, the board had voted $150,000 total, we've used somewhere around $30,000, so they have the remaining money to move forward through final design. They can incorporate that, those areas, looking at those areas to see if there's ways that we can better deliver the steam heat to those areas, they have some ideas on some things that might be causing the problem in those cold areas. DPW did install mini splits in those areas last year, so there is some supplemental heat in that area, although I think it was, you know, probably still a little few degrees cooler than people would have liked. So that was kind of where we left it. The direction I really need from the board, because we're, you know, we're running out of runway here to try to, if we're trying to use ARPA funds for construction, so I really need to give Weston Sampson direction if we want them to move forward with that design, and we have 150 that's set aside, and so if we're gonna move forward to try to get a bid package out this year, I need to have that direction tonight to move them forward.
So Beth, there's two different parts here. One is to look at the pneumatics for the existing steam boiler, but that's separate from the design of the heat pump system, right? And that's really what we're talking about, is that specifically?
Yeah, so I think, I think there's kind of two issues, right? So obviously, the building was very cold last winter, which is kind of what brought this to everybody's attention, but at the same time, there were three steam leaks in the building that caused emergency repairs, right? With asbestos, you're dealing with asbestos abatement on emergency procurement basis, like, not good things to be dealing with in a space where you have preschools and after-school programs and all that. The plan that Weston Sampson put together, you know, the base plan, is to really remove as much of the building from the steam heat where they know it is in the worst condition, right? So that was really like, where's the worst area of the building that we have a lot of steam heat leaks here, and that if that continues, you know, that domino effect is a big one, right? So that was kind of their base design, and then we're gonna, you know, throughout the conversations we have, is the areas that are gonna remain on the steam heat, what can we do to improve the steam heat delivery to those areas?
But that'd be a separate contract, right?
That can be, that design can be done under this-
Can be, the design can be done, but when you go to bid, you wouldn't necessarily bid that up.
I think we have to understand what the scope of the promise is. I think, you know, Scott from Weston and Sampson, you know, has some ideas that he wants to kind of flesh out in this next phase of design, that from a cost perspective, we may be able to include in that base contract, but until we kind of get into this next phase of design, we won't know.
Have you had any response from the school committee to answer to those questions?
No.
No.
I think they just got them, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think they just got them Friday or Saturday, so, yeah.
Friday, yep.
So if we approve something, the school committee also needs to approve something for the design to happen, or the design can happen and the school, and we and the school committee need to approve the-
I mean, it's your ARPA money, right? So you have control of the financial aspect of it, obviously.
We already approved the money for the design. It's our money to spend, even if that stays in our drawer, it makes no difference. We have to go to the school committee, if correct me if I'm wrong, for approval to-
For the thing.
To do the work, to actually do the work, right?
Whatever that work winds up being.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
I think there's the functional approval, you know, of that, but, you know, I think that we, when I was at their meeting on this, I didn't get the sense that they were, you know, full-on board with this, their questions reflect that, I mean, these are, you know, not light questions, and so, you know, I was hoping that we would have a joint meeting so we could talk about some of these questions, you know, what it means from a policy perspective, and what they see as the future of the building. I mean, you know, my concern is they made a pretty big turn away from the after-school, you know, programming and busing there, and so I don't know what their future plan is. Are they gonna cut busing? Are they gonna try to expand after-school programming? So what do they see as a use for the building? Is it a future site for administration? Is it, you know, a swing space building? Like, you know, because it may point us in the direction of really solving the bigger problem, you know, there, rather than this just very expensive, short-term fix, and so that's my concern really, is that this is an expensive, short-term fix, and, you know, we're kind of, you know, really rushing to get it done, but it may not solve the problem that we intend. It's, and when I was over there, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, right, Nick, it was, I mean, just reminded me just how big that building is also, it's enormous, it's an enormous one to maintain, and to, you know, put HVAC into, and so those are my concerns here, is that, you know, we need to know what the school committee's kind of policy plans are as well. I mean, from their perspective, it's kind of like, yeah, if the select board wants to throw some money at the building, why do we care?
I don't think we're gonna get that answer, I think, well, I think we have received that answer, which is the part of the master facilities plan, which is due to be published in the next 18 months, so gee, what they'll tell us. I'm not sure if we're gonna have any, I mean, we might get hints of what they might do with Mystic, but 4/25, but we're not gonna have an answer this calendar year, maybe not even by, you know, spring town meeting, probably, yeah. I mean, I agree, it'd be good to know.
I think they said they could prioritize that piece of the master plan, because it's not-
That's in our question, certainly, which we asked.
So, I mean, we, we talk about like a short-term fix, which is sort of, we got the estimate of five years, is that, this may not be a question, this maybe, should be a question for like Weston or Sampson, right? But like, when we say five years for this, is that we can guarantee there's five years, but the lifespan is, you know, up to whatever, or is it this is five years and we hit year five and we, you know, are now at a loss for heat again in this building?
I mean, we haven't asked that direct question, but I think the life of these systems, I mean, lots of people are putting them kind of in their residential properties, right? I think in general, we're looking at a longer than a five-year lifespan.
Right, is it like, five years from now, your machine is old, but it is functional, right?
I thought it was more, you know, from the perspective, you know, of that the other kind of failures of systems there would make the, you know, make us have to address the larger, yeah, the larger, you know- larger, yeah, the larger, you know, issue there.
So, I think tonight, I know Beth would like direction on do we move forward. I think we, I don't see any reason why we don't move forward with completing the design to understand what can be mitigated, what can be fixed, what can be done in improving heat and dealing with the core system. Now, whether we decide, given that and with the design yields within the budget, then we go back to the school committee and we have a joint meeting and we move forward. We don't, but I'm not sure, Beth, if we can pivot tonight without understanding what we may or may not get out of this design. That's just me. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't think there's much value in pulling the plug right now because it's, because let's say the school committee has a plan to do something else with the building, like she could turn over a really neat heating design system to another tenant, even if we weren't the ones to fund it, we could say, here's what might work given the structure and the conditions of this building. But I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to have had this many meetings, these many questions and not move forward with the design. But I don't know, we, we can't move forward with fixing it until we know, A, what it will fix and B, that the school committee will approve it. But I'm just saying that out loud, I may not be the only one who thinks that way.
I agree.
That's fine.
I think we have to move forward with the design. It's the only way we're going to answer a bunch of these questions, to get a more concrete idea of what exactly it is we're hoping to do with this building and what it's going to provide over X number of years. I think one thing that's very important that Beth just did more clearly than I've heard anybody else enunciate during all of these discussions is identify that there are two different problems happening in that building right now and different solutions have to be applied to different ones. And I think that there has been a lot of confusion and a lot of pushback because that hasn't necessarily been clear, that this started with an intent of trying to warm up some cold classrooms and that discovered the bigger problem of unreliable piping. And trying to rely on the cold classrooms justification for the piping problem has just gotten a lot of people turned around. But making it clear what we're trying to address and why we need to address it and then finding out what the cost and scope and timeline of that's going to be is going to allow people to start making the harder decisions coming down the line. And since we've already put money aside for this design, I'm fully in favor of going forward with it as you've suggested.
Anybody on this side of the table?
I don't disagree. I think, I mean, I, I think at some point soon, we need to sit down and have a joint meeting with the school committee about this because we're kind of playing this awkward game of telephone where someone asks a question and then gets an answer and then it's passed around and we talk about it here and they talk about it there and it's kind of challenging. I think we'd all be better served by all, you know, having a joint meeting and being in the same room to talk through questions and to have Weston and Sampson here and sort of just hash it all out.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not a perfect scenario. I don't think any of us wants to be making decisions in situations like these, but it's too important of a, of a resource, too much of a necessity for too many people in this town, just to drop it at this point.
Yeah, so I, I look at this as a car that's got 100,000 miles on it. Mechanics says, hey, it's going to be $3,000 to fix it. Yeah, like doing the value equation, do I put $3,000 into it or to Mike's point, maybe we should just get in your car, right? That's one. And then I look at also Nick's, a tenant, and daycare center's a tenant, and the school committees get a responsibility to, given them habitable space, but they've foisted upon us to solve the issue. So, we need, so I guess more collaboration on a, not, or just not more, just collaboration in this, in a short order to get to a decision.
Yeah. That's kind of our job as select board, isn't it? To coordinate all these people and herd the cats.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Obviously, sis, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we asked for that joint meeting, we pulled you all, and then the 11th hour, it was, school committee said, we don't want one, we don't need one. We're going to send you questions.
Yeah.
So, let's try again.
Yeah, I mean, the.
We can, we can try again.
The questions to me indicate that, you know, we probably need to all be in the same room if we're, you know.
Correct. I agree. You both said it and I agree.
Even for, you know, if it's over Zoom or a brief period of time, it does, you know, every once in a while, it doesn't hurt for all of us to physically be in the same room either, so to catch up on something like this.
And I was thinking, we're back together on the 29th. We can see if they'd like to join us on the 29th. Otherwise, it, we'll see what we can get done. But we've got to do it very soon.
I think this would be a better standalone meeting than a.
Well, that's right, we're having the planning board on that day. We can't do it.
Yeah.
You're right, that's a very long day.
The planning board.
Planning board coming in on the 29th.
Who else can be there?
And go.
Okay.
Okay, so a different day. But let's see what we can get. I know people are going to be going away, might be four fifths of us and four fifths of them, but perfect.
What's the planning board coming in for?
The housing production.
Housing production plan?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Something calendar by the end of the summer if we can. I mean, maybe not by the end of July, but by the end of August. We, we shouldn't start a new school year without understanding and Nick having a better sense of what the winter might look like and what parents are signing up for in preschool and everything else, we should see.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Ideally.
You know, I can release them to start the design on a schedule for a fall bid, but if we all decide at some point that this is not how we want to use ARPA money, then we need to be able to pivot very quickly to whatever it is we're going to use ARPA money for. So, the sooner we have this conversation, the better it is for us to be able to plan.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have a conversation too about, I mean, when we got into this, we, it was an aversion issue. It has been in the capital queue for a while, so it's not like we haven't had visibility to what exactly the different issues in the building were. We've repaired some of them over a period of time, but when, you know, we put money towards this and focused on it, we thought that it was going to be a $1.5 million fix for the whole thing, right? So, now we're kind of backed into a corner because it was 5X of that. So, I don't mind, I mean, I'd still would rather solve that problem, the bigger problem, even if it, if we use a little bit of free cash, a little bit of ARPA, rather than just the temporary fix. So, I guess that's my question, if there's a funding strategy for, to fix the whole problem and the whole building at once, if we're going to use it, rather than, or another option, which was just be 900 or whatever the amount is that we're doing it. So, I guess.
I mean, we have to agree, but we don't, we don't know what the plan's going to be for the building.
Right.
We just don't.
No, I know.
For, for two years, you know, that we all agree on it, maybe they've already pushed it to the town, maybe they don't, and then we have to decide what to do with it. So, I think we all agree, like, it would be a shame to waste a million dollars.
Yeah.
I know, exactly. But I'm sure of knowing when that system's going to fail, then I don't know what other choice we have. I don't want to just throw my hands up, but I don't have a better solution.
Yeah, for me, it's not, not doing anything at all. It's should we do the short-term or the long-term solution, right? So, and so, using that ARPA money maybe offset the larger costs and then doing some borrowing, I mean, you know, using some free cash. I mean, it looks like our, we can't.
But why would we invest in that full solution without understanding the disposition of the building? It's this constant chicken and egg thing.
Yeah, that's, that's why we, that, I think that's why we need to have a conversation. That's.
There's no way we can get to a December bid with the full design.
No, no, I.
Or to allocate ARPA funds.
But again, with the ARPA funds.
In the school, we don't have a decision on how long they expect to have this building in their, in their plan for another 18 months.
Yeah.
It's, we, again, this is not a position we like to be in, but this is the one we're in and we just have to start making decisions and moving forward.
Yep.
But if we're going to have that meeting with this, we are going to have that meeting with the school committee, can we circulate an agenda well before that so people can add to it? Like I'm thinking about Nick here, what, you know, what's a contingency plan if something goes wrong in that way? And he may not have one, so then that may force our hand. That's all I'm trying to ferret out before we show up to the meeting.
Yeah. And Beth, if you were talking to Weston and Sampson, I hope you show them the questions that you guys got here and they can.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. We got them all.
Well, I wasn't there for the first meeting, but then we met last week for.
Yeah, the first meeting's happened, Beth was on vacation. There's been probably three conversations. EFPC's been brought in because that was a question, what do they think of this? So.
I met with, we met with Jay Nardone last week. He, I asked him and he said it was okay for me to say this, that he is comfortable with the kind of concept design. Obviously, he didn't get into all the details of it and is happy, you know, if we want the EFPC to be involved in any of the conversations, happy to have them join the discussion.
Sure.
Mechanics, the disposition of the building question, but certainly if people think there's better engineers and better brains, we'll invite them.
Yeah, no, they can, they know the questions are going to be asked, they can get ahead of them and start building it into their report as to why they're making the decisions that they're making.
Okay. All right, well, design continues, Beth.
Okay, so the direction I heard is to move forward with the design as if we're going to bid this for a fall project and then we'll have a joint meeting with the school committee in the meantime.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Next up, select board goals. Come on. Night. So, in, in your packet was last year's logic model, which was sort of a work plan. We had dedicated time last summer, meeting at like 5:30 and building this out, and I'm not suggesting that we do that again this year. But what I did want to socialize, because I think this is our last meeting in the summer when all five of us are going to be here, was if you look at the goals that we had, you know, A through E last year, we actually made progress on quite a number of them, which is not surprising. Like, we weren't trying to be crazy, but they were, these were achievable goals, we weren't trying to be completely aspirational. I think we've already articulated a few other priorities already this year, like a fiscal plan and a capital funding plan. We are doing economic development, there's an economic development study that's been convened. We continue to move forward on housing. So, I think, and we are also around being good administrators, you know, Bill is working on performance evaluations and, you know, personnel. So, we actually have some very active goals already underway, you know, fiscal growth targets, capital plans, HR performance reviews and, and being better employees or employers of the town. So, what I was hoping to tee up tonight, to the extent that we don't want to rebuild this logic model, I think we can certainly work and say if we, we believe we've accomplished some of this, you know, CPA, let's, we haven't, CPA hasn't passed, but we got it further down the path. MBTA 3A zoning did pass at Springtown meeting. So, I can take the responsibilities to update this and not, you know, note things as completed, note things as underway. But wanted to just circulate it back, and Bill, you probably had not seen it before you got the packet, so circulate it back to say to folks and just ask, just knee-jerk reaction today, we don't need to spend a long amount of time on it, but do things still resonate sort of at the A, B, C, D, E level? Not at the sub-sub-sub level, because I will go through and update some things, but do those high-level goals still seem to resonate with this configuration of the board in terms of where we ought to be focused? And if there's a new thing that we think we ought to be focused on, let's create time in a future meeting to articulate what that is and we can update it. So, I wanted to bring it back and I think as we move into this, we're already in the fiscal year, it's July, it's the first month of the fiscal year. Let's not think we're going to make progress on 15 things, let's try to pick three or four and make some progress. So, but I, it's not my, not my three to pick. So, just wanted to say that. And I'll let anyone react to, yep, makes sense, no, it doesn't. I don't want a wordsmith in this moment, but I did want to at least bring it back up to say, if we can coalesce around some goals, we should try. So, I'll stop with that.
I think the, the high-level A, B, C, D, E still makes sense. Probably in looking at short, near immediate, long-term outcomes, there are some things that we might want to say, actually, this is a, a long-term outcome as we think of this and down the road, consider what are shorter, shorter-term milestones to get there. But overall, these things still, you know, they're, they're pretty broad and, you know, significant enough to remain.
I was just looking at Goal E, infrastructure, and I thought this desired outcome was sort of just timely. High-quality facilities are maintained at a level that reduces the need for emergency repairs. I think Mike wrote that.
Yeah.
Did I read that? Damn it.
I think I could offer a comment.
Please.
I think Goal E, I would elevate capital to somewhere in the heading, not just the infrastructure.
Okay.
That wouldn't be more of a fiscal goal?
I mean, it's kind of implied in infrastructure, but.
Yeah.
I think capital, it's in there, I mean, we have it there.
We can do infrastructure.
One, two, three, four.
We can do that.
There's a lot of infrastructure that we do that is capital, I guess.
Yep.
There's just capital that's kind of all throughout the whole thing there, so it's.
And Anthony, do you want it to be a sort of knowledge or just a fact check on the updates that I make? Because since we worked on this together.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I'll make some edits and you can say.
Love a, love a logic model, so.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, it's good. I think, you know, when we look at, you know, kind of starting off with economic development, building community there, and we have housing and affordable and transit oriented, I mean, what I've really been hearing from residents is just overall affordability. I think that for people's tax bills, you know, transfer station permits, water bills, the rate of increase, I think, has really been a, a lot higher than it has been in previous years. And so, there's the, there's a concern there. And so, I know we had discussed a, forming the state of the town committee because we're getting to the point of, you know, addressing other operating override and maybe some capital as well. And, you know, seeing what, what happens in the end of the CPA vote as well. So, you know, that, that's my only thing is I, I think more on the affordability perspective should be our focus, but also strategic planning. You know, it seems like we have gotten away from that and we're just picking off certain things from, you know, from time to time without really developing a, a plan, so.
Okay. I think that's fair. I, I think I'm, I was also just like, wow, we actually did a few things, which sometimes you go to all these meetings and you think, do, what do we do?
Right.
Right? We can, hey, we didn't do all of it, but we did some, which is great. And we did a lot of it intentionally, we didn't just like happen and like accidentally land on some stuff.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate the, the update on, you know, whether, I think, looking at CPA, state of the town committee, fiscal plans, which John and I are talking about, we're going to, Beth and I are going to try to sit down with FinCom's new chair, maybe chair and vice chair over the next few weeks. And, you know, they, we heard at town meeting, hey, what's your growth targets? What are you doing, right? So, trying to be just more thoughtful and collaborative with that in the budgeting process. But that's only one piece, right?
Yeah.
Fees and everything else isn't just, the budget's the high level, you know, that's, that's the sledgehammer, the more finite details, I think that's fair. So, as we make some tweaks to some of those goals or targets, or I think we can make that tweak, Beth, to that higher level infrastructure and capital, I'll highlight that and do some updates and we'll come back around to this. But just wanted to send it back around because it's, now's the time of year to set some goals and I think we have some goals sort of underway and I'll note that in this, that these are currently in motion. Some of them, maybe we need to put some dates to start, some additional things.
And one additional thought on the next two below that around sort of communication with residents and residents, employees, visitors feel supported in and by our community and residents, employees, visitors feel supported in and by our community and safe in our community. Is that, I think we're still fairly reactive in, in that sense for, for these areas? And maybe there's a way to be, and we have the commu- you know, communication plan sort of in progress and, and feedback around that and kind of getting that, that back. But also, like, are there just touch points to consider or other sort of?
Activities or...
Yeah, activities or increased visibility or things like that.
Okay. All right. I'm happy to go on to the next piece on the agenda, because we weren't trying to just dive into it all.
Can you just circulate whatever native format you have this logic model in, be it Word or...
Yeah, it's a Word document, as I recall. Yeah. Sure will.
It's the easiest way to give you more feedback, but...
Absolutely.
Your question was A, B, C, D, E, how do those look? I think they look great. Those are the obvious pillars of government minus education, but that's the school community's problem.
Yep. Okay.
It's a good organization tool.
Great. And we'll make sure you get it. Okay, so, next up, CPA Advisory Committee. Not to be confused with any CPA campaign. So Beth's update, we, I've raised my hand to be the select board person on that committee. We have all the other seats filled, as I recall. All the other boards and committees have nominated people. Mike and I had a chance to connect, and I think the goal is to at least convene that committee, potentially on Zoom, sometime in the next few weeks, but certainly before the end of the summer, to just even set out, you know, to charter the group. What is the outcome? What's the meeting cadence going to be? Maybe assign some homework assignments. Too bad Roger left, even though he's not the capital planning guy. But, you know, what do we expect from everybody who's on, is part of that committee, and what is it we're trying to do? There's, I think it's advisory to what a WCCP could be, so I'm not sure that this committee will do the actual, like, nuts and bolts of the process. The, the group, if the CPA is, is to pass, I think that's where the real nuts and bolts need to get defined. But we at least, I think, should have some parameters and some comparisons of other communities, how do they do business? But I don't know that any committee that would be newly formed, if the WCCP, would appreciate, like, this is exactly your menu that you must follow, right? I think we need to have some guidance, but we're not going to just be so prescriptive that it violates a bylaw. So I, Mike, please take it away. I think you've been on this longer than I have, but I wanted to just, you know, what I think our next steps are.
I think, I think that makes sense in getting everyone together, make sure everybody's on the same page about deliverables for it, because everything was kind of harried when this concept was developed, you know, in town meeting. And so having some information to provide to the future WCCP committee, right when they walk in the door, hopefully the CPA passes, then, you know, we can have surveyed some other communities to see what, how their committee has formed and how has evolved. Because that's my sense when I did outreach to a lot of similarly situated communities around us, was that they said, well, we started it this way, and then we did this, and then we had to backtrack and do this because, you know, of this impact or the economy or whatever, whatever it was. And so I think giving that information to the future members of the committee will be helpful as we, we survey them and then make some recommendations. So, yeah, I would say a few, a few total meetings going into fall town meeting would be, would be beneficial.
So that's the update on that. And so you have all the names of the folks. I actually heard from one of the members like last week. Have you guys had the first meeting yet? I was like, you didn't miss anything yet, but we will be doing a poll for availability. It'll likely be on Zoom. Look for something to come out soon. So probably work with Beth and Patty and others to get that survey out.
Yeah, and also, Michelle, if we're done with that item too, we did schedule the initial Community Preservation Act campaign committee meeting for a week from tonight. That'll be at the large meeting room in the library. There'll be invitations sent out, but it's, it's posted meeting, I think, from 6:30 to 7:30. So it'll be introductory in nature and try to gather people around. Have a couple meetings, one in July, one in August, and then a really kind of a larger campaign kickoff in, in September, when everybody is, is kind of back and more, more focused going into the, into the fall. So it's, I think a lot of people have been asking about it, and so we'll, we'll send that around and get the meeting going, and we'll have multiple ones, and we'll, we'll, we'll try to have it be hybrid if possible as well.
Okay. Thank you. Your logic models in your inbox, Bill. Patty just sent it to you.
I saw.
Thank you. Patty?
Oh.
Tremendous. So we all have that. Okay. So I'm staying with things that we're all invited to. Wednesday afternoon at 4 o'clock is the ribbon cutting for Bagel Bar on Thompson Street. I have a conflict with work unless that cancels, but someone else wants to go and pose with the big scissors, have at it. Be nice to see. So I sent that around. I know we didn't say it during public, our, our sort of like opening session, but...
I plan to be there, John.
I went to another one downtown, sort of fun.
Yeah, no, please.
The merchants.
Go ahead. The, the chamber would like to see us there. So, so in addition to Mike's meeting next Monday, we also have a ribbon cutting Wednesday at 4, if we want to go. Okay, next up, fall town meeting articles. Also in Beth's packet were some potential fall town meeting articles. Let me go back and find it, because I'm slightly out of order.
It's page four of Beth's.
Yes. So Stretch Energy, potentially bylaw review for FinCom serving on other committees. And what's the third one?
Looking for punishment if we want to go back with the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund.
Yes.
Any turnbacks this year?
I had a chuckle.
I'm not sure there are, but it's always fun.
Should be a standing article in the fall.
It should be. It's a good program.
I think it's a good placeholder. So...
We'll see. I don't, we'll, you know, we'll see in a month or so where we close out with the Health Insurance, or Health Insurance Fund in '24.
But let's take those one at a time. First was potentially bylaw change to resolve any question or route. Can FinCom people appointed by the finance committee be of their current members, or must they be? A non-current member or a, someone, you know, not currently serving? So there are plenty of towns that have it in their bylaw that says, you know, you can apply to be, appointed to be FinCom if you hold no other office, and you don't serve in other committees unless the committee asks you. Like Arlington has a bylaw that very clearly says, you're here and FinCom is your thing, unless the other committee has chartered and wants you on their committee. So it seems like we could potentially just clarify it by making it clear that if you're being asked to be here and FinCom is making an appointment, you could be either a current member or not. So how does the group feel about that as sort of something we could put on fall time meeting to clarify? Because it came up in the spring.
I mean, I think it makes sense, and I don't know, we had been putting off a few of these, you know, tweaks to the bylaw while we did our charter review. I don't know where we stand with the charter review at this point, but...
It's just about to get underway?
There may be some, some other things that we address along with this one.
It's fair.
So it's not so targeted at that, because, you know, again, I mean, we've been doing things for a certain way, and it's been, you know, working for a long period of time, just to find a, a technicality and then bounce out, you know, a stakeholder from a conversation, just seems bizarre, so. But we don't, we don't want to be going back every town meeting and doing that, so I don't know if there's, yeah.
I think we need to coordinate. So before I speak for, I don't, I'm not going to speak for the three of you, but I think before we would get too far ahead of it, as select board, we'll do this one bylaw change. Then we need to talk with Mary Elam, we need to see the decennial bylaw review. Like, is there any output that we could package up? I think that's fair.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to get a sense of, is this something that were there, not a ton of other changes? Is this a change that we would want to try to get behind? That's just a question for each of us as individuals, so. I'll start with Bill, and then I'll tell this one.
Sure. I mean, in generally, generally speaking, I am in favor of cleaning up our bylaws in any way that needs to be done. But then the question is, how are they being changed? And I don't think we're going to come to a conclusion today on any of that, so.
Oh, no.
So, like...
This, it's just kind of like the work plan. Is this a bad idea? Is this an okay idea? If we were to get further along that path, is this like, let's not go there? That's what I'm trying to understand today.
Yeah. I, I think we should always be looking at our bylaws to find things that need to be improved or, or changed, or whatever the case may be. So I, I think that should just always be in our docket. And then whether it really should be coming from the select board or should be coming from the government regs committee, that I don't know. But at the same time, there's no reason why we can't, again, be kind of leading the charge on an issue, even though it might not be necessarily one that should be coming from us. We can get the discussion going. So I'm in favor of that.
That's fair. Okay.
In favor of review, in favor of improving our bylaws, making them more clear. One, one that I heard that I thought was very interesting was getting off of Robert's rules, because there's another set of rules for conducting something, something like a town meeting that are more plain English, plain language and understandable, and, and better suited to that sort of environment.
Whoa. That's the Bill McGonigal motion? Let's get off of Robert's rules.
Yeah. But, you know, some people might...
Get there over time.
Yeah. And, but there are places also where we divert from Robert's rules, and that, that causes confusion. So that's, that's kind of why. Like, we should be looking for those, and, you know, there, there's always this big rush up the town meeting, and then we all deflate right afterwards. It, it's a shame that we don't take some time to look at what went right and what went wrong, and how the bylaws might be able to be improved to...
Yeah, this, this feels like one that, I'm not sure went right or wrong, it just went a little sideways. This seems like a pretty clear, like, I think we could do something to just avoid this, so I think you're right, though. So that was just one placeholder. Okay. Anthea?
I mean, I think it certainly warrants more attention. We have a conflict in our bylaws that seems to be, and so, you know, how, what's the right way to resolve that? I think we should be, you know, I would like more information, basically, like, background to how we got to sort of these conflicting points, how that relates to your example from Arlington. Because I think there's some, you know, we have an understanding of FinCom's role and of FinCom not being sort of policy setting, so, you know, don't want to then sort of put their members in positions that are crossing lines of policy setting. So how, how do we really look at all of the information and clarify and, and make it so that it is easy to interpret what we have going forward?
That's helpful. Thank you. John?
Two things I'd ask that we get done in 26 minutes. It's 10:03, and if Mike, that we would be out before 10:30.
How much is running on that bet? All right.
You made a bet with him, too?
All right.
I agree with both, both Mike and Bill. I think Bill's is a much more global approach. I think with Michael's point is go with a handful of items for this next town meeting. I'm down with that.
And, and it may be that we kind of have a conversation with town meeting that fall town meeting is kind of for those kinds of things in the future. So it's not spring town meeting when you're dealing with the heavy budget load. But if we're doing kind of bylaw tweaks, that's what, so it's, you know...
Good season for that.
Yeah, just clean, clean up, because there's a lot there.
All right. Well, in the interest of John not losing his bet, Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. Probably keep it on? This is kind of like a probably keep it on versus kill it, right?
Good conversation to have with FinCom to see where they're at, because I think that, you know, we got, they were on board with it last time. We got a little bit ahead of them, you know, on the, the number. And so I think we were at 500, and they were comfortable with 250, and then it just got confusing on the floor. So I think if we all started...
You're right. Good conversation to have.
We'll have problems this year, so it won't, it won't be anywhere near the 1.2 billion that we had.
And we are trying to get with Jeff, so that's a good point, too.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, it, looking at our receipts, seems like we're in a pretty good, you know, position on reversions. And so I don't know what the impact that is as far as an operating override and things. But that's, that's when we really have the ability, if we've got that money in the stabilization fund, to...
To absorb some of that news.
To absorb some of that, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else to, no, okay. And then Energy Code, we got a presentation last meeting, I think, from, from Ken and Rick and others. So I think they'll be looking potentially to see if we would want to co-sponsor. We'll, we'll certainly be asked to take a position, so. I think they're still doing their public hearings and public noticing, and there's more socializing of that Energy Code. But I think those are just placeholders for now, so I'm not seeing anyone make huge unpleasant faces at it. So we can move on, in the interest of moving on.
Yeah, I mean, the one I didn't kind of explicitly add here is just as the capital conversation evolves, there's things that come up where we might want to, you know, we had the high school gym floor. We were able to use the overlay money last year. We obviously have some free cash. We might want to kind of work with capital to...
Pick off a project, potentially.
Yeah, like HVAC for the town hall.
Bargain price of $8 million.
$1,000 degrees in here.
That's all it is. All right. So then, thank you, Beth. I think that's a good placeholder, potentially a capital project where we might try to get behind something and potentially try to use some free cash. Okay. Next up, committee updates. So you have the updated list of committee assignments. We realize that, I'm not sure we voted on all of them, so if, if, I would just ask people to glance through, and like, if your name is in red, Housing Partnership Board, or Capital Planning Backup Bill, if your name in red doesn't seem right, can we just like call it out now? Otherwise, I think we're going to call these as our appointments and our committee assignments for the year. Nope, of course I jumped, right? We're doing updates. Sorry, I jumped to 10. We'll go back to nine. I jumped directly to committee assignments.
You're confusing our viewers.
Sorry, viewers at home.
Both of them. They're like, what?
Where are they? I think I'm good for that every meeting, so it's like, when will she do it, right? So anyway, I am on committee assignments, item number 10. And so for the board, does, do any assignments seem surprising? Like, no, I never said I would do that. If not, I think we're good. And we will publish it, make updates.
Looks good to me. The only thing is I asked you about, I had met with the Jumelage folks, and they asked me to be the point person for whatever. I don't know what that is, but...
Jumelage.
Jumelage in general. And so when they're doing events or doing whatever, just as far as the liaison to the select board. So I said that I would, but I said, you know, it's really the board's decision, I guess.
Does anyone have France?
I don't think it's free, but it's also, doesn't, doesn't preclude any of, any, any of us from going also, so...
Mike really wants to be in a parade with a big old sash on, maybe a hat.
Yes.
A beret. No, in all seriousness, anyone have a, any concern with Mike being the, we'll have a new committee called Jumelage Liaison. Any concern with Mike being that person?
No, thanks for doing it.
Okay. And then there's a trip. You donate to socialize with all of the board, because like, maybe some of us want to go, but not during the Olympics. So there's that. All right, so we'll add a new committee, and you're it. And thank you for coordinating them coming in here tonight, and I know they reached outreach to Beth and nice tour of town hall. So, thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
All right.
So the only one is the Manchester Cultural District.
Has an opening.
Yeah, I can do it. I don't see it on here, but sure.
I've never been to a single meeting, but if they call. All right, Bill, you're it with me?
So what I plan to do this time around is every person who is the primary court person, I will, I have to send it to the town clerk, but I will also inform all of the chairs, give them your email.
Okay.
So that they know, and...
You can just circulate this form, right?
Yeah.
Individually to, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, but there's nothing to hide.
There's an extra step that I should be doing, and I think that...
No, I think if you, if you take out the strike-throughs and update the colors and add Jumelage, I don't think we care if anyone knows who to contact.
Yeah.
On our website. I don't care. Then we try to do not it, like...
Yeah.
You'll be miller's counter.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. Okay, so now...
I just wanted to mention, since we're on committees, that we have added a new section to the agenda.
Yes, thank you.
That we're going to update every time what the open positions are.
Hmm, fantastic.
So if you all want to help to promote that or care that...
Right.
Yeah, thank...
For our viewers at home, if they'd like to be...
So those are all updated, so the postings will expire any joint...
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? We have some committees on here. I don't know how to ask this correctly. We have ConCom and Street Trees, but we don't have Climate Action. Is that, but we appoint people to Climate Action, so...
On this list?
Yeah.
These are the ones that you have, like, you board members?
Especially have a board member appointed to.
Either, like, for capital, it's just a liaison, but, like, Housing Partnership Board, I think you're a voting member.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, that, that clarifies my clarifying question.
Climate Action are a group of people appointed by you.
Yep.
Kind of a distinction, I guess.
Yep. Okay. And thank you, Beth, for highlighting the open committees for people who, in community, members of our community who want to join, you know, cultural councils out there, disability access. So we can always refer to that. Maybe like every couple of town manager updates, you could just throw that into your comments. Because it is published, it's part of our agenda, and anyone can see. They can go to the website, so thank you for that. And thank you, Patty, for keeping that current, because I know it's not easy.
And we did at one point receive a request to kind of have a conversation about the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. I know that it was disbanded and is here, but I, I don't know where that left off with that.
So that, I think, we'll, we will take up in one of our summer meetings.
Okay.
Yep. We've not forgotten it. I think it's a question of if there's a charter and a charge, what, what is the span of control and influence?
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just was, I noticed it there.
No, no, you're not, because Beth brings it up about every couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so we will, we will get there. All right. So committee updates. I don't know if we have many. We had a CPA update. We have the ARPA update. I don't know if there's any HR update. So if this is just open floor, if any select board committees want to make an update to the rest of us, go right ahead.
I can do a quick one. So I guess this is an update from the Staff Review Committee. I spoke with David Connolly, who is our outside counsel for employment and hiring and HR issues, to talk through what we might need to do, what we might need to be aware of, what we might need to avoid when conducting staff reviews. He says the biggest issue is just the open meeting law, and beyond that... And beyond that, we really have a lot of discretion as to how we want to do it. And so I've been reading examples from other towns, looking at their handbooks as to how they've done it, reading some of their reviews of their town manager or their comptroller. And the big question that I have for the board right now in terms of going to the next step is what do we want the scope of this review to be? And I think on one end, we have a more involved, more detailed, more people contributing what some people call a 360-degree review process. And then on the other end, we have one which is just the five of us at the table here, providing input and creating a review package that's then given to the reviewee. If I could make a suggestion as to where we land somewhere between that, I think it would be trying to normalize annual reviews where it's just the select board reviewing the three people that we're looking at, the town manager, town council, and the comptroller. And then maybe every two or three years, doing the more intensive up and down the ladder 360-degree review. Because that should be done and I'm sure we get a lot of perspective, but I think we need to first start by just normalizing annual reviews for all of these people. And so my suggestion, but it's open for discussion, would be to do, start working now on creating a review form for each of those three positions. And maybe time reviews to be done six months before a contract is up, so they have time to react to it. We just reviewed the town council's contract, obviously. I don't know when, Beth, you're on the, up for discussion.
February 26.
February?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So plenty of time to get, start getting them done for you. But I think trying to get them done and presented with at least a couple of months before a, end of a contract or a negotiation or something like that, so they have time to react to it. But just starting with something a little bit more focused on the select board itself. We can actually, we can of course bring in anecdotal evidence that we want, but just keeping it at the table here, at least for the first year.
If that makes sense? That's where I would have probably landed, so. Okay.
Yeah, I'd be more in favor of kind of communicating a regular 360 review, even if it's a smaller group of, of people that are kind of weighing it. But that's just my, my perspective. So I think that we had done that in the past and have had, I think consistency is, is important, you know, so.
Yeah. I, I want to get the habit going and I think that starts by making it easy, but I, I agree with you. I thought, well, is there a happy medium?
Yep.
And I was like, oh yeah, we should get the planning board involved. We should get the zoning board involved too then. We should get capital planning involved. We should get FinCom. I was like, oh, now where do I draw the line? We're already adding so many people.
Take all of those committees right there.
I mean, to, to your, the point on, I think if we could, we just did town council's contract, we just did Stacy's contract. Now we all have the date of February 26th for Beth. If like the target is to have the 360 in advance of the contract and that gives us a little time to.
We can plot it.
To get like, as you're saying, start easy, ease us in, get into the cycle of doing this and then have the 360 prepared and sort of the timing to roll that out in, in advance of any contract discussions for any of the staff.
Yeah. So Bill, if there's any, I'm not gonna put you on the spot for like next meeting, but if, if you think maybe in the next month or two, if there's tools that you want to circulate, you could start with town manager, that's the next one, probably. And then after that would be comptroller, but if there's some tools that we can react to, throw in our packet, you know, A, B, C, and we do some mashup, that'd be probably helpful.
No, I'm happy to put together a timeline and.
I'm on this committee with you, so you can throw some things my way too, which is fine.
There we go. A timeline and a suggested form and process for all of it. And then I guess the one last question I would have, I've noticed that some towns include, their review of someone like the town manager in particular, might be broken into two buckets, where one is just kind of the procedural, getting things done, administrative sort of aspect of the town manager job. And then the other one's much more policy focused, where it's, we gave the town manager these policies we wanted to focus on, like we see in our logic model, how well did the town manager help us further these policies? But I've noticed that those have been clearly communicated to the town manager, you know, well in advance, so that they know for the next year, these are our five big goals. And then they end up on the review form the following year. I don't know, being the new guy, if that was ever something that was really communicated to Beth prior, as like what the big goals for the next year might be. So that might not be something I put on the form initially, but there might be a space built in for next year.
Yeah. Show us an example. I think that's kind of neat.
So a couple of things to Bill's point, like there's an old concept from the eighties called management by objective, MBO. So you sit down with your, whoever your direct reports are and you set out what, what the goals are and you make sure that, that they're comfortable, that they can achieve them. And if they need any kind of accommodation, right?
That's part of the process, yeah.
And then the, in this case here, Michelle would meet with Beth on a quarterly basis to talk about where we are with each one of those things. Because it should never be, oh, your year's up, here's your review. You're like, well, yeah, that's insane. You waited for a full year to give me feedback on this? And then in fairness to Beth, I think if you can do a 360 review, that should be completed a year or more before her contract comes up for renewal. So if there's corrective things, if she wasn't clear on something, because I look at us and say, we weren't clear to her, then she has time to address that and is not somehow jeopardized by that.
Hundred percent.
You know, that, that's all my comment on that.
No.
I think it helps us to, to keep focused on the goals that we've identified for the town manager, because a lot of times it's just all crazy and we're coming into a meeting and it's, you know, putting out fires and, you know, as Michelle said, oh, it's surprising when we look through, you know, what we had, that we actually got some things accomplished. You forget because it doesn't feel like that, you know? So.
It doesn't feel as intentional sometimes, right?
Right, doesn't feel as intentional, but, but it may be that we get to the end of the thing and we say, oh, you know, this is, this, we didn't get anything done this year. And then, you know, we look at what the targets were and every single one of them was hit, so.
And I think to knit those two concepts together, it's, and I know Beth keeps her own work plan, it's like of those goals that we might sort of agree on as a board, what are the actions on the town manager that we expect? What are the expectations and what are the actions that we want her to take versus what's the oversight that we need to provide and what's the guidance? And then what are the things that we own, that we're producing? You know, like we're gonna do the output or we're gonna run that process. So I think that's, we could do both. We can have our goals, communicate Beth's role in achieving those goals and follow up. I think it makes sense.
Great.
Beth, I'm sure wouldn't mind.
I'm welcome.
Always appreciates clarity. Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you all.
So let's, let's see what we've got to react to. So, okay. Any other updates? Okay. The, well, select board meeting cadence, so two things on that. First is Beth, as you heard in the report, the warrant closes the week of October 7th. I have, that's when we would normally meet. I happen to be away at a conference, so we may try to find a meeting the week of October 7th, so that's the week before Indigenous Peoples' Day. To finalize the warrant, have a regular business meeting, I might be remote, but we, we're a little bit ahead, but I want to socialize that, that, and I could even potentially dial in on the 7th, I'm just gonna be in a different time zone. So just a note, if we don't do that day or we, we're not, I'm not in person, but you are, just know that that week is a little bit in flux, but we do have to get the warrant finalized because it closes like the very next week or the end of that week.
How's your other printer on the?
The 9th?
Sixteen.
The 16th. So we've gotta get it done, done that week.
And we can't, we can't meet Monday because it's a holiday.
And we're not gonna wait till Tuesday.
Tuesday would be too last minute.
So that's just a heads up on, that's not what this agenda item was, but that's just a heads up for you all. The agenda item on cadence was kind of related to where we always are at 10 o'clock in our meetings, which is sharing our own updates, talking about what we do or didn't do or who we, you know, what we're doing next. And do we want to try to find, I think I said this a few minutes ago, do we want to try to find another hour in our month, maybe during the day, to get on Zoom, not to get here, and invite people in or, or all of these, the, the committees that we're liaisons to, report back on what's going on in these committees that we attend? Like if the cultural council has a meeting and I go now with Bill, like what did we hear? What do they need from the select board? What are we hearing in our liaison roles? What are we, what are the boards that we're on that were actually voting members? What are they kicking around? What's coming up for fall town meeting? And how are we doing toward our own work plan goals? So that's just a thought on if we wanted to do, not that we need another Monday night in our life, but I don't want to get down the path of like what day works better and what time of day? Does the concept make sense? Do we think we need more time that's really working on our stuff, which is different from maybe all the presentations that we hear and the hearings that we have and the licenses that we approve? When people think about that, is it a need? And if it's a need, do we want to try to fix it?
I think we pilot it.
We pilot it?
Right?
Look at that.
See, see, you know how productive it is and if it's not productive, then we just.
How much you sidetrack us from the work at hand. Productive, he's like, he's like, I can scuttle this in three meetings. It's like, made that soon.
He's the filibuster.
Yes. Look at how unproductive that was. No.
No, I, I think it's, it's good.
I like the idea too.
Yeah.
We can revisit it.
I don't know, I'm saying do it and if it doesn't work, it wasn't what we hoped.
I actually thought that what we did last summer with the, the goals, where we just said, you know, like this meeting, we're gonna start 5:30 and do 5:30 to 6:30, take a short break during exactly, and it, it kind of tacks on time on the same night, but it gets us a little fresher talking about those things so that we don't do this like, oh, it's 10:30, so we're just gonna punt because.
I mean, Beth.
It's 10:23. I got, it's still off on the computer. I'm like.
Still got the consent agenda, John.
Well, my other thought was, there's an op, there's also an opportunity to do like, do we submit, like everyone gets two bullet points into a sort of consent agenda updates that, that we have as well. And then it can be like questions, discussion versus, you know, talking through some things.
We could pilot that, let's see. So you're, you're thinking like, yes, maybe we tack it on with once a quarter or something that we just meet an hour earlier. That can work. I mean, it was focused time, we weren't so tired. I agree with that. Okay.
I mean, I think we need it. I think that there's a lot of discussion that we kind of minimize because we're pressed for time on, on these nights that we're going so late. But keeping everybody updated and informed is only gonna be helpful. I would say maybe we could do things, I, I would suggest something over the lunch hour and it's just focused on specific topics in advance. And maybe some of us don't have anything to present at any point in time, so you're just sitting there listening and eating a sandwich. But we, we need more time.
Okay. So we might be like, yes, I'm gonna hear from Mike, but right now we're sort of like three or four of like, yes, it's the how and the when that we're not sure yet. So now, Mike, what do you think?
Got a few thoughts.
Exactly. Leave one minute for the consent agenda.
No, it's a parlay.
Four minutes. It's a, you got a prophet?
Wait, was that like Goodnight Moon, right? Or we're just like.
Sort of a runder on this?
Yes, yeah.
Blow it by five minutes?
No, look, I mean, I think, you know, you know, I, I do a lot of, you know, subcommittee work and, you know, liaison work outside of our Monday night meetings, very busy. My schedule, whether I'm in court or with clients is, you know, very busy as well. So I, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, I've been on the board for a long time and I think that we've been able to, over the years, manage within that timeline and adding, you know, emergency meetings or things like that, or intentional ones like, you know, work plan or something like that over a period of time. But I think we get into like a real slippery slope when we start adding in another meeting, especially if we're talking about things that are, you know, committee reports or things like that. And people say, oh, you did it on a Friday morning because you didn't, you know, want to give it the, you know, kind of public attention where people are used to, you know, listening to us or focusing in, right? It's, seems like it's very under the radar. So I think that our, our agendas, we, we probably just need to like put some real like time limits on what we're talking about because we end up really kind of unraveling with simple updates from, you know, people. If something goes a half an hour on a Monday night, that's just an update from a committee, that's probably too long, right? When we have something like the housing production plan meeting and the planning board coming in, well, that's one of our main priorities. So that makes sense that we're doing that and, you know, that should give them 15 minutes or whatever it is. But I, I just, I, I feel like with a lot of the items, like we just need more intentional agendas, more recommendations, you know, more clear recommendations from management with options. It seems like we get a lot in our packet, but with, we end up just kind of shooting from the hip a lot without a lot of direction. And so our meetings tend to go longer. And so if we need extra meetings, but I, I just don't have that time during the day, it's just, it's very difficult. So, and it's, doesn't, doesn't feel good when you can't make a meeting and everyone else is there, you know? So that's my only thought about it, so.
Okay. To be continued.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Is there, and one just question to that point is, is there a way that in the packet, that we have almost like an annotated agenda that says, here are the, here are the items on the agenda and here is what.
Is coming or happening.
Is, or here is what.
Here's the question presented.
Yeah, here's, here's what you need to be prepared to.
I mean, if you could try to do that in my.
And you're gonna tee that up and.
In my town manager, and maybe it's not successful, so tell me if it, if you don't feel like it's hitting the mark. I try to say this is what the topic is and this is, if there's a staff recommendation and then what, this is kind of what the outcome is for the board. But obviously there's like, some of these agenda items have a lot more to them in terms of background than others.
Yeah.